Welcome everybody to our scheduled meeting. Okay, welcome everybody. Call this meeting to order. Dr. Zuniga, if we can have roll call.
Yeah, good evening, Number One. We can start off with Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Francisco Briones.
Present.
Member Salazar de Sigueres.
Present.
Member David Diaz.
Present.
Member Carlos Tardado.
Here.
All present.
And then if we can have our legal counsel lead us into closed session.
Thank you. Closed session items tonight are as follows. Item A is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, existing litigation case number 20STCV02052. Item B is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA. Item C is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUEA or Delta Education. Item D is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, labor negotiations for CSCA Chapter 11. Do we have any public comments for any of the closed session items?
No public comments for tonight's closed session.
Okay. With that, we will move into closed session.
Welcome back and welcome to our open session. Dr. Zuniga, if we can do roll call?
Yes, thank you. Good evening everyone. Start off with board member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Board member, Lorenzo Briones.
Present.
Board member Estela Torres Segres.
Present.
Board member David Diaz.
Here.
Board member Carlos Sarcedo.
Present.
And student board members Ilali Palacios.
Present.
All are present.
Great. And let's, well, approve of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with the exception of item F-15 under regular agenda. If we can pull that item from consideration.
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none so moved. We can all please stand for a, for our flag salute. Right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If you all remain standing. At this time. I'm going to read a little, something that was posted by the Royal American Cancer Society. By one of their fellow knights that unfortunately passed last Monday. And then we'll conclude this, we'll follow this up with a moment of silence. Last Monday they wrote, "Today we say goodbye to a fellow knight. Nathan Caballero was diagnosed with the rare cancer Rabdomyosarcoma in 2020 while on distance learning. Nathan's last name is Caballero, which means knight in Spanish and is truly fitting. He believed in God, constantly reassured his mom that he was not afraid, and fought bravely even up to the morning that he passed. One can't help but believe that the sky is crying on that rainy day for the courageous knight Nathan Caballero, who left us three days shy of his 16th birthday. Nathan had an eclectic taste in music and loved gaming with his friends. May he rest in peace. He'll be remembered for his bravery, shy smile, and strength in the face of adversity." Thank you. Okay. We consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none so moved. Consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes of March 16th, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
I abstain. All those, I'm sorry, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain. Moved 401. And we move to public comments. Are there any public comments, Ms. Dr. Zuniga?
Believe there are no public comment at this time. If anybody wished to make a public comment? No public comment.
Thank you. So now we move on to communication from union representatives of VMUEA and CSEA.
Yes, thank you President Sarcedo. Mrs. Brazil contacted me this afternoon. Unfortunately she had a family issue, so she's not able to attend today. So she just wants to again wish everyone a spring break, outgoing spring break and be safe out there. And we look forward to working with the, regrouping with everyone when we get back from spring break. And I'm not sure if anyone from CSEA is representing this evening. I believe not.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we move on to a few recognitions. We have Dr. Zuniga for our Acadeka.
Yes, thank you, President Sarcedo, again. This is probably one of my joys of being part of this group setting here when we get to honor our students and coming back from distance learning, the whole year being out. We made an effort every month to ensure that students are being recognized, that our staff is being recognized for their dedication and hard work to their specific programs on campuses, whether it's academic programs, athletics, clubs, organizations. That's our joy. So we want to welcome everyone to our, our evening's program. Every time we feature our board meetings, we have presentations and recognition. And this section provides recognition of the amazing work that our students continue to do, even coming back from a year being out to distance learning. I'm proud of our Academic Decathlon, although this time it was a virtual competition. The show went on and some of our schools opted to continue and compete in a virtual setting. I hope that experience from distance learning paid off, but I know that we have our top scorers here this evening along with our advisors. And we want to celebrate them and congratulate them for the dedication and the countless hours they, they did to prepare for this event, which occurred back in February. Results came out and we're excited to announce those top scores here. I believe we have three schools this evening for the recognition. And I will start off, and maybe we can do by alphabetical order. I believe a Royal High School is here with us this evening. And you want to come up here and it will recognize anybody else from Royal High School here? It's okay, we'll, we'll have you sit by that podium because we're going to, part of our, part of our recognition is that you get to also showcase your, you know, your contributions to the team, the Academic Decathlon effort, some of the exciting moments that you had, maybe as part of the Academic Decathlon team. We also want to hear from the advisor if they have any words to say about preparing for this, this time with the students as well as the competition too. So for Royal High School here this evening, we, we want to recognize the advisors as well. Our student Jacob Marine is here along with our advisors. I know Mr. Sandoval is here, but unfortunately, Mr. Bedoya was not able to be here. And Principal Flores informed me that he had a conflict in scheduling. And Jacob, we want to start with you, perhaps maybe your experiences and why do you think you got that top score? Number one, congratulations, but perhaps maybe summarize that and you're, you're well deserving and really exemplifies what a young man from Royal High School, you know, we all strive for as well. So would you like to share a little bit of information before we recognize you officially?
Hello? First of all, thank you. I would like to say it's a, it's a great honor to be recognized as one of the top scorers. I mean, initially this year, reflecting back on my previous three years, because I was a, a part of Academic Decathlon for four years now. I was never the top scorer, but I did learn from my mistakes and I did learn from my peers. And I think that was a very important thing to know. And this year, right off the bat, like before we even started studying for Academic Decathlon, I decided, okay, so my main objective today, this year, for this competition, is that I want to be the top scorer and I really want to put the effort, the dedication and the commitment and stay consistent at doing so. So throughout, like balancing the Academic Decathlon, the club, the work, the tedious studying for all those various subjects, while also studying and maintaining my grades for school or doing any extracurriculars aside from that, was, was really tough to say the least. But I managed to pull through by organizing time. And that's one of the things I also learned through my four years in Academic Decathlon, is to how to manage my time effectively so as to not stress myself out and to not put much, too much of a load on myself, really. And I'm very grateful for that because it, while being in Academic Decathlon, it also has helped me prepare in life or, or develop more skills, such as public speaking, for instance. Okay, I'll be honest, when I was, when I was a freshman, I was not very comfortable at speaking to public audiences. But while being in Academic Decathlon, we had to do three performing arts, which is like speech, interview, impromptu. And, and the other one would be, okay, no, no, I mentioned all three. But it was very interesting to try to see how over the four years, I developed that into being able to be confident. And I know I'm kind of taking up a little, a little time here, I apologize. To be able to develop that and use those skills for the future. You know, maybe where I'm in a position such as this, or I had to speak in front of another audience or communicate with other members in maybe a career setting, then it helps me to prepare for that Academic Decathlon. And I'm just very grateful for that. And I'm also very grateful to my advisors, to, that helped me and supported me along the career, around the career path of Academic Decathlon competing. I know it was very strenuous to compete in this year because it was virtual and there was a lot of obstacles. But ultimately, while I'm here now, of course, as a top scorer, and I'm very grateful that I did put in the hours, the work to make an effort to be the top scorer. And yeah, thank you.
Mr. Sandoval, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your?
Yes, I'll keep it real short and sweet. These kids are incredible. They deserve all the praise and respect because they work hard along with their, in addition to their workload, it includes AP classes, six periods, zero periods. These kids take another workload to do this program. And to come up here and, I mean, it's a great honor to celebrate him along with the rest of them because these kids do double the work of every other kid and they don't stop. And especially during quarantine, they didn't want to give it up, like, no, we've got to keep going, keep going. Jacob took over president this year. He's done a great job. I couldn't be more proud of these guys. They're awesome. Another round of applause to these guys. Thank you.
President Sarcedo is on his way down now to present you with certificates on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Along with that, this evening, each individual receiving a recognition will also receive a district pin.
I like this one just so that I can turn and face the crowd. But Jacob, we're, we're extremely proud of you. It's always nice to hear how somebody kind of worked their way up and never gave up and to know that all that effort finally paid off, right? But we know that it doesn't come easy and it doesn't come without a lot of help. So I'm wondering, do you have parents who showed up here or family members? Dad, if we can, big round of applause for dad. Yes. We always want to make sure to recognize the support that we get from home, definitely. So I'm very happy that you brought him along because we know that it doesn't happen with people behind you, whether it be mom, dad, an uncle, a tia. We know what it takes and we want to recognize you, Jacob. I handed you one of our pins, but a certificate of recognition, and I'm going to read it. Presented to Jacob Marine from Royal High School for attaining the level of top scorer on the 2021-22 Academic Decathlon. Your academic achievements make you an excellent role model for your entire school community. Congratulations from the Amane Union High School District, Board of Trustees. And we also, as we talked about, our support and the people behind us. We know that we have that triangle. We have the parents, we have the students. We also have staff that is always there and it can't happen with all three partners. So we want to thank you, Mr. Sandoval, for your dedication and your leadership for all of our students in the Acadeka from Royal High School. So congratulations. Certificate for you. And if we can have you guys in the middle to take a picture, both of you guys?
We're also going to get some comments from the rest of our board member if they wish to comment. We'll be able to take this picture now. Okay, just a quick couple of comments from other board members if they wish to comment.
Yes, of course, I would like to do it. You brought me back at 1999 when my daughter, exactly from Royal High School, she got the first place in Decathlon, Academic Decathlon. I know, Jacob, how hard you work. And especially I know your parents, how much they have to help you and push you and not give up and keep on going because it takes hours and hours and great effort to get this. And Mr. Sandoval, that's wonderful because I know how much the coaches had to work with them, with the students to keep it up and I'm very proud of that. And I give you thanks because you brought me beautiful memories a long time ago when my daughter got it. That, that, this recognition was wonderful for her because she keeps doing the best in her life. She always remembers with lots of love. At Royal High School and Academic Decathlon, keep on going and you are going to be very happy in your life. The best for you. Thank you.
I'll save my remarks till the end for the entire group.
Britio, you want?
Jacob, wow, you're a great public speaker. Let me tell you that I remember when I came on to this board in 2013. I went because we were advanced, mid-sized Advanced Placement District of the Year by the College Board and we flew out to Pennsylvania. And I remember at the time that we took some of our students from here. And although our students were good speakers, when I heard the students from other school districts, you could tell that somebody had worked with them and prepped them and they had a mentor and stuff like that and you could really see that they stood out. But when I heard you speak today, you reminded me of those great speakers that I heard when I went to Pennsylvania. You, you've developed into quite an awesome young man. And I have to tell you this, this district is composed of about 80% Latino and 23, 24% Asian. And one of the things that I'm big on as a, as a minority school board member who sits on here is that this school district creates, whether it's a competitive team in sports or whether it's a competitive team in academics, I want it to look like the composition of our school district. So I'm great to see that as a Latino young man, you were the top scorer. What that tells me is that when you've got mentors like Mr. Sandoval, who create the right conditions, the right support, the right encouragement, great things can happen. And so congratulations to you. And when I see you as a male standing up here, it really makes me happy because we have a young lady named Citlali Palacios who sits here. And one of the things that she's kind of been on our case as a school district and as all of us single board members, is that she tells me, hey, I'm a very high achieving Latina young lady. But you know, when I go to my Advanced Placement classes, I'm only one of two Latinas that sit in those classes. Can we please kind of do a little investigation or find out why we don't have more Latino kids sitting in those AP classes? And I think that's a, that's a great discussion to have in this school district. Not good, not bad. It is what it is. And so we just need to find out. How do we get more students like Citlali as a female and minority to be in those AP classes? But I think that Mr. Sandoval could probably help us with that. Where are you, Mr. Sandoval? Definitely help us with that because, again, create the right conditions, create that support, create that encouragement, and the rest will fall into place. So kudos to a Royal High School, to the mentors, to Mr. Jacob Marine and to his parents. Where are his parents? Raise your hand. Right there, taking the video, right on. Kudos to you. Because parents always judge themselves about how, how their kids turn out. Excellent job in raising the, Mr. Marine. Keep up the great work. Go Knights! And that's coming from a panther, just so you know. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next goal. I'm also excited to introduce this individual who is going to come up first. I'm going to ask him to introduce his team. And I'm very proud again to feature Mountview High School, the Vikings here. We're with this evening, we have our advisor, Mr. Jeff Boland, and also our student honoree, Sir Aiden No. But I'm going to ask Mr. Marquez also to make his way up here too, to perhaps introduce them and say a few words on behalf of the school. And then also, we will hear from Aiden if you wish to, as well as Mr. Boland, before we recognize you. And welcome everyone again.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Yes, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our member. Aiden No is from our Academic Decathlon team and Mr. Jeff Boland, our advisor. And I have to tell you, just reflect on what our student from Royal High School said. It's, it's a big difference. It was a big challenge and it, and it was just a lot of dedication from the students. So, you know, I'd like to hand it over to Aiden and see what he'd like to say.
Hello, everybody. I hope you'll forgive me for being a little flustered. I did not expect to have to speak today. Unlike Jacob, who spent four years in Academic Decathlon, I've only spent two. So unfortunately, my public speaking skills aren't as developed. But I'll try my best to express my thoughts in a concise manner. I, I just really want to thank Mr. Boland, my Accad coach. It's his spirit and his genuine enthusiasm for Academic Decathlon is genuinely the, the driving impetus behind my accomplishments. Without him, I would not be here today. I want to thank my peers, my teammates on the Academic Decathlon team. They've done so much work. I, I do think that some of them have done more work than me. So I'm very surprised that I'm here today. I want to thank my mom. I don't know where she is. Is she over there?
There she is.
Oh, there she is. Yeah, she's what keeps me going. I mean, she does everything. She drives me to school. She's, I don't really know what to say. I can't express my thoughts. I'm very thankful for what she's done to me. I would not be here without her. Yeah, I mean, sorry, I, I'm, I'm not great at public speaking, but those are my thoughts. So thank you so much for having me to be here today.
So it's kind of hard to believe that 18 years ago, probably right around this time, I was standing here with Aiden's cousin, as a matter of fact, who was the top scorer in our entire region. And looking at Aiden's Academic Decathlon scores this year, I see potential definitely next year for him to be right in that same range. So much ability with Aiden. And this has been an interesting couple of years. Both of our Academic Decathlon competitions ended up being virtual. We thought that we were going to be in person this year and we're a little bit disappointed with Omicron right before they had to shuffle it up a bit and we ended up being, being virtual. But the students made the adjustment and went in and were successful. We hope that next year we can do it in person. There's a lot more spirit and it's, it's fun to get together with the students from the other high schools in our district and across Los Angeles County. So that's definitely a hope of ours. Aiden did not have my academic class, Decathlon class with me last year, but he put in the effort on his own and said, you know what? I want to be able to compete. And so he and one other classmate of his competed on our team. And then they came and joined our class this year. And it's been a struggle getting back into the classroom and figuring out how to have conversations and get things started. But I always know that if I'm in doubt about where, where can I go for an answer, I can always turn my eyes back to the back corner of the room and Aiden's got an answer for me. He's not, not always going to volunteer. He'll give other people the chance. But if it drags on too long and it gets too awkward, I'll turn my eyes back to that back corner and Aiden will, will bail me out for, for sure. So I'd like to thank him for that. He's already going on next year's Academic Decathlon topics. We already got the main topic and so we're hitting the ground running. So I see good things in the future for Aiden, for sure. Thank you, Aiden.
How long have you been the Academic Decathlon coach now? And you don't look a day over 23. I, I was a student at Mountview when Mr. Boland was hired. And I remember all the students related. And I remember all the students relating to him because he looked like us. He looked like he had, he was still a student. And frankly, I think a lot of students probably still think that to this day. And it's that youthful energy that, that transposes into Academic Decathlon. And it's because of your hard work that we have students like Aiden that are here with us today as top scorers. As Mr. Salzado spoke about earlier, we have that triangle, our staff, the students, the parents, community, you know, all of them together, coming together, working together, gives us students like Aiden. So it's my, my pleasure as a Mountview alum and a former Academic Decathlon student, never a top scorer though, to present this certificate to you, Aiden, from Mountview High School for attaining the level of top scorer on the 2021-2022 Academic Decathlon. Your academic achievements make you an excellent role model for our entire school community. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees and it's signed by all of us here tonight. Congratulations. And we also have this beautiful district pin for you, which you can wear with pride. And of course, to Mr. Jeff Boland from Mountview High School, for your leadership as a 2021-2022 Academic Decathlon advisor, your service to our students is to be commended. Congratulations on behalf of the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. If you guys want to come up to the center so folks can take pictures. And everybody being recognized tonight for Academic Decathlon, don't leave. We want to get a group photo with everyone at the end of this recognition.
One more round of applause for the Mountview Vikings. Should we move on or do you want to do comments at this time? Bertha?
Let's do the other acadeca and then we can make comments, yeah, together. And then we'll move on to the other recognition.
Okay, all right. At this time, I am going to move on to our next school and our final one for Academic Decathlon for the 2022 school year. South Almani High School Eagles are here. So want to welcome the Eagles. Along with the people that are being recognized, Dr. Morales, our proud principal of South Almani High School is also here. And he will formally make that presentation, our announcement and introduction of our actual advisor and also our student, a top scorer.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. And again, good evening to all. My name is Dr. Jorge Morales. I'm the proud principal of South Almani High School. I am very happy to present again and recognize the hard work of other school student leaders. But tonight, I do support the home and family being the theme of tonight's presentations. At South Almani, with the support of teachers, staff and parents, we strive for our school mission of every student being a success story. But we focus now on our top scorer, Jaleen De La Cruz, a senior at South Almani High School. In order for Jaleen to get this top score, she needed to compete and combine scores in seven objective tests: math, economics, science, social science, literature, art and music. And of course, she needed to also complete an essay, a speech and an interview. So with that said, Jaleen is our representative at South Almani High School. She's the one that has other stories there, also put in the time to prepare and lead her team forward. I'm proud of Jaleen as she is a former ASB president. She's also an early college academy student and an overall great student leader on campus. So without further ado, let's recognize Jaleen De La Cruz, our top scorer for South Almani High School.
So good afternoon. As said before, my name is Jaleen De La Cruz. I unfortunately was not able to take Academic Decathlon for all four years, but I did take him for two, my junior and senior year. And unfortunately for both, they were all virtual. But I would mostly like to thank my coach because this is his first year actually as an Academic Decathlon coach. And I can honestly say he did an amazing job with all of us. From not knowing what to do to Mr. Castillo, the previous Academic Decathlon coach, he was always there helping him. But it was mostly Mr. Lopez who was like taking us all through, trying to get every advantage for us. And I just like really want to thank him for all his efforts as well as all my team. We all put in amazing effort being, I was the only returning Academic Decathlon member and all of them were new. So I'm really proud of my team as we all tried our best, tried to learn all of the content, yet still try to put in more time after school, just trying to go in and just making it our all to try to get a good score. And then I would also like to thank one of my best friends because he's always the one who's like pushing me forward. It's like, okay, let's go over the essay. Let's go through the speech. So I would like, really like to thank him and thank you all of you guys here today for listening to me. Thank you.
And as noted by Jaleen, our acadeca coach is a first-year math teacher, a first-year acadeca coach. And most importantly, he was not able to join us tonight, but as you heard, her appreciation for his sponsorship and support throughout the competition season. So thank you to Mr. Mario Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Marquez. What's the thing you guys do at South Almani? Can you do that one thing?
Onward.
It's only a South Almani thing, huh? Got to get it district-wide. Well, Jaleen, you are already an incredibly impressive person. All the things that Mr. Dr. Marquez Morales, sorry, Mountview. He didn't hear it. He didn't hear it, all right? Mentioned are incredibly impressive. So as a former Eagle, I'm glad that I'm presenting this to you. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to Jaleen De La Cruz, South Almani High School, for attaining the level of top scorer on the 2021-2022 Academic Decathlon. Your academic achievements make you an excellent role model for our entire school community. Congratulations again from the entirety of the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. Round of applause. And then Dr. Morales. I have another name with an M here, but it doesn't have your name on it. I know. So I'm just going to say that this certificate of recognition is presented to Mr. Mario Lopez at South Almani High School. So let's give him a round of applause. He's with us in spirit tonight. And then you can go ahead and applaud him. Congratulations again. And if you want to go take a picture.
Thank you again. And we're excited to celebrate Jaleen's graduation this year, but I want to welcome her sister as well, as she will be a future Eagle in a few years. So come on up and join us. Her mom and dad are working tonight, so she's here by herself.
One more time for the Eagles. Congratulations. Okay, at this time, do we want to take a picture of all of our Academic Decathlon teams on the board and then we can move on to our next recognition after?
We can make comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
For acadeca and then we'll take a picture.
Okay.
The stories the secrets?
Oh, again, you three kids made me feel so happy. You don't know how beautiful it is for the parents to see your daughter or your sons participate in this program. It's fantastic, this program. I love it. And I am so happy to see that Mr. Boland is, is one of the mentors. Her mom was my daughter's mentor and is a lady that my daughter never forgets because she always says that the mentors in this program are very, very patient and they help the students in everything. My beloved students, you are going to have in your life a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful memory of this program. It's a beautiful program and especially your parents, they have to remember always with love, all the great job that you did for your children. Thank you very much and congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Board President here. Just again, you know, congratulations to Jacob, Aiden and Jaleen. You are already super incredible people. I'm excited for your future, wherever that may take you. We just hope that when you accomplish what you need to educationally, academically, workforce training, development, whatever that is, that you come back to this community. So we look forward to seeing some of you sit on this dais and serve and be of service to others. So congrats to all of you, the parents, for your sacrifice in making it work as well as the staff. So thank you again and congratulations. Thank you, President Salzado. Excuse me. Just another round of congratulations to our three students today and really to all of your teams. The work that you do does not happen on your own. It's definitely a collaborative effort with, with every student that's in Academic Decathlon. And you know, as Mrs. Torres de Segres stated earlier, you know, you guys are all wonderful, impressive students. And I'm completely blown away by not only the scores, but the level of maturity, the articulation that you show to all of us today. And I'm extremely grateful beyond words to your family, to your parents, your guardians and to the advisors because these students depend on you to get to where they want to go. They depend on your support and without it, a lot of them may struggle. So by you being here tonight and being in their lives, being active in their lives and being purposeful in their lives, it shows that you're there to support them in whatever endeavor they want to get involved in. So I would just want to say thank you to everyone. Congratulations again to our students. I'm looking forward to recognitions into, you know, the years to come. And I want to continue to see those high scores. So thank you again. Congratulations again to all of you.
Yes, you know, research says that it only takes one caring individual to make the difference in the life of a young person. And I know that these three recipients of tonight's award will remember their mentors, whether it's Mr. Arthur Sandoval, whether it's Mr. Jeff Boland, or whether it's Mr. Mario Lopez. They will always remember that mentor for the rest of their lives that, that took them to that high level. But I want to talk specifically first about Aiden Noe. Aiden, where are you? Don't ever say that you're not a great public speaker. You're an excellent public speaker and you're excellent because you spoke from your heart. When you were talking about your mom and wanting to thank your mom, I could feel you as a speaker and I could feel that emotion. There is no better speaker than when you speak from the heart. When you're ablive, it's better than when you have everything scripted. I could feel that thankfulness that you, that gratefulness that you have towards your mom. You're so humble. You are a great public speaker. So say that to yourself and you're already there. So keep up the great work and great things will happen to you. So it was, it was truly refreshing to see you be recognized here and get your 20 minutes of, 20 seconds of fame here. You deserve it. Well deserved. Mr. Boland, thank you too. I know that you're the math guru, math expert. I've been in your class for many years and I know that you have high expectations for our students and you like them to excel. So thank you for your mentorship there. In terms of Jaleen De La Cruz, wow, 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 wow. You're so animated, great public speaker, past ASB Associated Student Body president. You have it all. You're so accomplished. I love you being, for being grateful to your coach and to your friend, but you didn't tell us your friend's name. What's your friend's name? Ruben. So kudos to Ruben. That way you could say, hey, they said your name at the board meeting. So that's awesome. We all need a good friend. So thank you for being an awesome leader and I couldn't be more proud of you. You know, when we sit here, sometimes we do the boring part of it, like all the purchasing and all that business part of it. But when kids come, it reminds us of why I sit my butt here and because you guys are the number one customers in the Almani Union High School District. It is because of you that we do this job. And I know that all of my colleagues are here to support students. So kudos to all three of you, to Jacob, Marin, Aiden Noe, Jaleen De La Cruz. And it's good to have a little gender equity, you know? We don't want the boys to be winning all the awards. We need some females in there because I know they're amazing leaders equally as we men are. And we need to always remember that. So kudos to all three of you and to all of your wonderful families that I know are there and to the sister that came today. So congrats. Very proud. It's a proud day in Monte Union.
All of you that came up today were very articulate, very well spoken. Okay, I could tell in the way Jacob stood up there and Jaleen and, you know, Aiden. Well, I'm going to get back to Aiden. I'll be back. But all of you were, were very grateful of the support that you had, of your teammates, you know, whether it was one person or whether it was a group. And I love that. You know, unfortunately, we had to pick a top scorer, right? But it really is a team effort because you guys worked together all year long and you depend on each other, right? And that support, it's what's going to get you over or it's not. So if you have a strong team, you move each other up, right? What I heard from you, Aiden, was I'm a top scorer in only two years, so watch out. I got two more. That's what I heard. Are you a sophomore? You're a junior. So I think you put everybody on, on, you know, on notice that you're going to take it all next year. So that's what I heard. So congratulations to all of you, to all of our, our, our teachers who support our students and definitely our parents. Congratulations to all of you. So now can we take a picture with all of our acadeca and, yeah?
Yeah, if we can have all of our students and advisors return back for a picture along with the board and then we will conclude the Academic Decathlon recognition. All right, congratulations again to our Academic Decathlon top scorers and their advisors. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for all your support and all you do for our kids. Our next presentation is, will feature our Our next presentation is, will feature our wrestlers who qualified for state this year. I think this is the first time for Almani Union that we've seen this. And also, we weren't expecting the return of some of our students that were just recognized a few months ago for their outstanding achievements in wrestling. And I say this is the first time, because normally we're out here recognizing our male wrestlers. And for the first time, we have three state qualifiers, all female, from the entire district that made it to state this year. They were all females. So what an amazing accomplishment and first time. And these individuals, they're name brand, they're actually, they're just branding themselves because a lot of little ones in the elementary schools and junior high schools, and even as freshmen, young ladies are looking up to these young ladies who will be leaving us soon. I just can't wait to see what they're gonna bring back and what they're gonna do when they leave the campuses of our district. And just the amazing work that they've done and the hard work determination they've done to get where they are at now. But also behind a great, amazing athletic young lady is also outstanding parents and coaches and supporters of our schools for the wrestling program too. So I also want to recognize them as well. We have our coaches here this evening from two schools, along with our young ladies. First and foremost, for Aurora High School, Mr. Can Tran, and he's also a popular person around here too, because we've invited him a few times here for the wrestling CIF champs from a few years back. And also a gentleman who I've known for since high school, I think, and also has provided service to this community of South Almani High School for many years now as a council member. Mr. Hector Delgado as well. He's not only the coach, but also he's also supporting Rosemead High School out there as one of our employees and staff members, supporting our students there too. So what a great team that we have this evening, and we're gonna recognize them all together for their achievement. And again, these were the young ladies who placed state, and not only placed state, but just blew us away this year with their accomplishments nationwide, and also their acceptance to the recent university that they're gonna be going, I believe all three are going out of state. So outstanding. So first, I'd like to introduce again and welcome back. I think we were doing virtual recognizes last time. We saw you guys on virtual, but, you know, it just, this is bittersweet to have you guys over here and also watching you depart after the end of this year to reach your goals and your potential in wrestling and academics too. And another very unique thing about these two individuals is that they're siblings. Brianna Gonzalez and Emily Gonzalez, would you please come up? And also, we will welcome Coach Can Tran. He's also a teacher and educator at Aurora High School as well. And from South Almani High School, the one and only, we also have this Mia Delgado, who is here as well. Mia, you should wake up here. And Mia gets a two for one. Not only do we have the coach here, but also her father, who is the coach. So we want to welcome Hector, Hector Delgado here. So I am certain that these three young ladies have had conversations about not only wrestling, but about life, about where they're gonna go. And I'm so glad to see all three of you, you know, venture off, but I hope that you communicate, stick together, and don't forget where you come from. We are so proud of you and can't wait to see you, whether it's on the newspaper, on the sports highlights. We're gonna follow you, and hopefully you guys could provide us little updates when you guys venture off. But first, let's recognize you for making state this evening. We have some certificates for you, and also I'm gonna hand over to Mr. Salcedo, who is here now. Okay, we have the three certificates here. And do you want the board to walk down all together? Okay. All right, so we'll make our way down as the board, and then we can recognize all three at the same time. And then we're gonna go in reverse here, and after that, we'll give you the microphone. If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to. If you just want to say thank you, that's also fine. We're good with that too. So congratulations again.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out and recognizing these amazing young ladies. I was fortunate enough to have coached them for the last four years. Honestly, at the beginning, when we first, I coached their sister. She came out when she was a sophomore, then she got injured her junior year when she was playing softball, and she came out her senior year. And that's how they noticed the sport, and they went to see her wrestle. And so, so they tried out, and they wanted to come to Aurora, because their friends were there. They had moved before they're, they're, they're coming to Almani Union High School District. And they were almost gonna go to the Baldwin Unified School, High School over there, and we're like, no, right? So I talked to the parents, and fortunately, they decided to come to Aurora. And, you know, we hit it off, and ever since then, we just, you know, skyrocketed. This year, they were CIF champions, they were Masters champions. That's what all the CIFs, there's six CIFs in our southern section, they all wrestled together in the Masters, so it's like the best of the CIFs. And they both won it. They went to state, and they were first and second in the state. We took third as a team in the state of California, and that's the highest we've ever done in the history of the area. So, you know, congratulations to them. Last year, during the COVID year, they had participated outside of the school, like in the summer, and they actually went to the Pan American Games. They won that in Mexico. They competed in Texas, in Iowa, in North Dakota. They were Fargo National Champions. And so they got recruited to Iowa. It's, when you talk about wrestling, it's Iowa, Penn State, the top tier teams, and they were recruited there. And next year, they'll be wrestling for them. So it's amazing what they've accomplished and the recognition that they bring to our area is a wonderful thing. I also like to thank their parents, Carlos and Gabby. It's parents like these that, you know, not just have their kids enter a program. And a lot of the, I would say through the 25 years I've coached, most of the parents, the kids who want to do it, so they let them, they allow them to compete in the sport, but they don't show up to like the events. These parents are there volunteering, you know, at the snack bars, at the door, you know, barking at people to pay to come in and chase them down when they don't have their tickets and things like that. And that's the kind of support that we need, you know? It's not just the participant, participation of the community and parents' involvement. And that has really inspired them also to work harder, because their parents are involved. And so I just want to congratulate them and thank the parents.
Hello. I'm Brianna. I would just like to say thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate it. And I want to thank my parents for always driving me to my practices and waking up so early to my tournaments. Thank you to Coach Tran, oh my gosh, for the long, hard hours worked with me and my sister. And, oh my goodness, I'm not gonna. I just wanted to add that my parents are amazing. Unlike like other parents from our wrestling team, like they show up to every tournament. They're always there. My dad is always holding his phone, recording every match. My mom's in the stand, like yelling, screaming, and they're just, they're just amazing. And my brother over here, he's always like recording, telling us to go kick some butt. And I want to thank Tran for the past four years, you've like been, you've been pushing us, and we wouldn't be the, sorry. Oh my gosh. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I, me, my sister and I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you. We wouldn't be going to Iowa next year, D1, like that's, I would have never thought freshman year, I would be where I'm at now. And I just want to thank you for that. And I also wanted to thank another coach we have, Victor, he couldn't be here, he's up in Menlo competing wrestling too. I want to thank him because he, after every practice, whenever he says bye, he's like, bye state champ, bye world champ, like just the manifestation, like it really worked because I fell short from my goal of being state champ, but I'm proud to say that I'm a state finalist. And I want to thank also another coach, Coach John, he couldn't be here, but he, he's always taking us to UFC to get, to get another workout in, and he's just, he's amazing. He's driving us everywhere and whenever. And I also want to thank Coach Shane, like he's always at practice, coming from work, just putting more time in for us. And I just want to thank, like, you guys for recognizing us, and I'm just honored to be here. Thank you.
Girls, stay up here. My name's Hector Delgado, I'm the coach at South Almani High School. And first and foremost, I want to thank these young ladies who have been tremendous competitors. Not only tremendous competitors, they're students first. They are 4.0 student athletes, and they're phenomenal athletes. And I'm gonna tie this all into what the common thread is here with the young ladies and with my daughter Mia. And it's a program called Beat the Streets Los Angeles Wrestling. And I want to thank the person who really helped spearhead this in our district, and it all started with the man right behind me, Larry Cecil, over at Mountview High School. We had a vision there at that time, brought it over to South Almani High School, and we've been there competitively now, going on nine years, and we're proud to announce that we'll be returning back to Mountview High School and have two programs at Mountview High School and South Almani High School. These young ladies are currently part of tomorrow's leadership program through Beat the Streets Los Angeles, where they teach social development for these young ladies. Not only leadership skills, they're also gonna be provided with scholarship opportunities once they complete this program. There's 50 other students through the Los Angeles County where they are currently participating in or are part of. And I want to thank you, Rue Washington, the executive director, but more importantly, I want to thank the board for their tremendous support in the program, because you can see the ladies, young ladies and the young women that we are putting out through our Beat the Streets program. So on behalf of my wife, the entire community of the city of South Almani, and the Mission Valley League, we've had a number of kids come through who are part of our Beat the Streets programs. I want to thank Emily and Brianna, and I'll tell you what, they closed this chapter in their illustrious high school career. Look for them not only in college, gonna see these young ladies in the Olympics one day, okay? And you mark my words. With that said, I want to thank Dr. Jorge Morales, who's been just an absolute champion in supporting our wrestling program at South Almani High School for our young ladies. The entire administration, also our athletic director, Mr. Soniya Yala. I started this program four years ago, I said, hey, there's gonna be, we're gonna change the culture, and we have. We started off that program originally with, I think, seven or eight girls. Just before COVID hit, we had 42 girls in our program. So we're absolutely proud for the effort that South Almani, the administration has showed us, the entire district, Dr. Zuniga, and the entire board, Mr. Cecil as well, in showing the love and support for Beat the Streets and developing the next crop of leaders. Both my young daughters here today, they're also part of our Beat the Streets wrestling program. So with that said, I want to thank them, but, you know, Mia, she had a tremendous opportunity this year, fell a little short at state, but wrestling is never about the wins. It's about the losses and how you pick yourself up and continue, continue fighting, and you move on to that next chapter. Mia's a dual-sport athlete. She's actually been a world team member for USA Judo, and Mia's currently ranked number 25 in the world. So she's gonna be taking her talents to Michigan at the Sienna Heights University. It's a small Catholic university. And so we're super proud of Mia as parents. I'm very grateful for the opportunity again, especially for Mr. Soniya Yala, who four years ago believed and offered us the opportunity. But I also want to say this about Coach Contran. We go back well over 30 years as competitors. And I'll tell you, the last four years in the Mission Valley League, the title between South Almani and Aurora High School has been determined by less than 15 points. So that goes to show you the level of competition in the Mission Valley League, but my amount of respect for Coach Contran and his staff over there, because the level of competitiveness and the type of student that we're putting out here. So Coach, I want to thank you for that. With that said, again, I'm grateful for the opportunity and thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing us to work with our young ladies. Thank you. And I'm gonna pass the microphone right back over to Mia. I don't know if she'd like to say something.
I'd like to thank all of you guys for this recognition, because wrestling is one of the few sports where not everyone sees what goes on in the wrestling room and the hard work and dedication and tears, a lot of tears that go in after the wins and losses after every match. And in the room is my dad. He's been there for me since day one. He's always taught me to be my best and work my hardest and to have the highest expectations for myself and to not think less of myself. And I'd want to thank him for everything he's ever done for me and my sisters and my mom and my whole family for putting up with me through all the weight cuts and through all the tournaments and through the traveling and everything. Because wrestling is a hard sport, and not everyone can do it. So I think being female athletes just makes us want to be even better. I'd like to thank Dr. Morales for always supporting girls wrestling, Ms. Ayala, and all of the sports at South. And I just hope that girls wrestling and the Mission Valley League could get bigger and better in these next few years and have more state finalists, state qualifiers, state placers.
I'm just gonna say that when you've put so much effort, blood and tears, it's all right to get a little emotional, especially when we're thanking and recognizing everybody who's been there for you, right? And to achieve at the level that you've achieved, you know, I'm gonna say that following the three of you through either social media, because I know Hector would post, you know, when you would win a tournament, you know, and, you know, and when Carlos or Gabby, you know, for many of us, for me, that's how I was able to follow you guys. And definitely not surprised to see the three of you here. Very much expected it, because for those that follow you, and you have a lot of followers, everybody knows the amount of work that you've put into this, you know? So it was just a matter of time, you know? I certainly wasn't surprised, you know? I'm glad you're getting the recognition, because, trust me, I know the hard work it takes, the amount of work, the amount of support from home, both not just driving, but I'm sure financially, you know, our family and friends, because it's expensive, you know, to drive to, fly, drive to all these tournaments. It's a lot of time and hard work, and keeping the grades up. It's impressive. It really is impressive. But I will say, I gotta say a quick story. So, because I shared this with them earlier. So, because I shared this with them earlier, with, with the twins. When I was driving over here, I just, I had this flashback memory. The twins, Brianna and Emily, um, and my daughter won the same Phillies team, right? And so I've known them for quite a long time. And, you know, to see their work ethic back then, right? Um, the, the story I share with you, see, I still can't remember which is which. Was it Emily that hit that homerun? Brianna. State tournament, right? Our section against our, just, I remember there was just, just disdain for Temple City, right? They had beat Almani once, you know, and Almani had a double dip, the Almani Phillies, you know? And they came back and did it once, right? And then the second game, these are 12-year-old girls, right? Losing two to one in the last inning, runner on second. Just, we're just hoping for a hit to tie it. Hit the homerun, walk-off homerun to win the championship. I still remember that. I remember the covering my ears because 12-year-old girls can really hit that high note. But it was so exciting. It was awesome, you know, and, but back then, you know, I knew that we were going to expect nothing but great things from you guys. Um, you guys, three of you deserve it. Uh, I've had a ton of fun, uh, watching you at all your, I think I watched state CIF and Masters, right? And then one time I accidentally hit like join and Maya hit me like, Dad, don't do that. Gabby's going to get mad at you. I'm like, so I had to shut it off and restart it, but watched all your, all your matches and man, I think the three of us were crying, just so happy. I mean, first place and runner-up. That, that's so impressive for state. I mean, it's just so proud. Um, so I'm going to read this out, uh, for you guys, um, give you your certificates. Uh, and then I'm sure the other board members would like to see a few words, right? Um, so this is a certificate of recognition presented to Emily Gonzalez of Aurora High School for your success in the CIF Wrestling State Championships. Your athletic achievements make you an excellent role model for our entire school community. Congratulations from the Almani Union School District. Congratulations. And then if you guys didn't know, Brianna put me in an arm bar and that's why I had surgery. So she's the one that did this. Uh, Brianna Gonzalez, uh, for your success in the CIF Wrestling State Championships, your athletic achievement makes you an excellent role model for our entire school community. Congratulations, Brianna. And of course, your Royal Coach, Kent Tram and former, what, state champion, CIF champion, you know, uh, it goes unsaid, right? Sometimes we forget our, our, our mentors, our, our teachers, uh, accolades, but, uh, very well decorated and, you know, we couldn't have two better coaches, you know? Um, so Mr. Tran, uh, for your leadership, uh, for our entire wrestling program, uh, your service and the service to our students is to be commended. Congratulations, Mr. Tran. For Mia Delgado from South Almani High School, uh, for your success in the CIF Wrestling State Championships, your athletic achievements make you an excellent role model for our entire school community. Congratulations, Mia. And Mr. Delgado, proud Papa, for your leadership also, for your leadership in Beat the Streets, for everything that you've done for our school district, for promoting wrestling and for being a mentor. Um, your service to our students is to be commended as well. Congratulations and uh, best wishes to all of you in, at, in college, parents. Keep posting on social media so we can follow because really, now that they're going to be far away, that's the only way we're going to be able to. So congratulations, Mr. Delgado. And Mrs. Stella Torres de Segres, a few words?
Yes, of course, a few words. You know, girls and coaches, you have to, to feel very proud that you make us feel very happy when we see you and you bring us memories. Uh, the president talked about the memories that he had with you. But you brought me memories back in 1994, when my son was one of the first, uh, students who was in Aurora High School, who was participation in, participating in wrestling. They were no girls, I remember, because I did the same thing that your parents did. I was always there checking how was my son was going to be treated in this terrible, terrible sport. But my son was so stubborn. No, Mom, I had to do it. I had, oh my goodness, David, when he says something, he does it. He did, he worked really hard. They never participated as good as you are doing it. He, but it was so wonderful to see him. And now you, when I see you doing that, I admire double. First, because you are ladies and second, because you made us very proud. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the coaches.
Girls, I want you to tell me where you're going to college and say it loud.
Sienna Heights University in Michigan.
The University of Iowa.
The University of Iowa.
None of those universities are in California, right? No, okay. Just, I want to make sure. Because when you get there, you're going to make sure you let people know that not only are you from California, but you're from El Monte. You are graduates of South Almani High School and Aurora High School from the Almani Union High School District. And you will remind people of that every time you step onto a mat and you win another championship. Our school district has a hashtag that we use in our social media, EMU HSD Inspires. I think the three of you are the living expression of that hashtag. Each one of you is an inspiration to all of us here. Not only because of your great athleticism, but because of you being great student athletes. Now, our priority here, the Almani Union High School District, our number one priority is our students. And being up here today, recognizing you, oh my God, I, I'm really at a loss for words. You know, I could never do what you do, both athletically and to be quite honest, academically. You guys are amazing. You three ladies, I'm getting deja vu because we recognized you, what, last year, uh, virtually. And you guys, you were all going off to compete. Mia, you also competed in jiu-jitsu, is that right? Yeah, judo, excuse me. I, you know, I, I am at a loss for words because, you know, I'm wearing a knee brace right now because the other day I stepped wrong. And here you are, champions in the sport that you chose to participate in and really that you dominated. So never forget that you are graduates from Almani Union High School District and you remind everybody, no matter where you are, that this was your home. Congratulations.
Unlike Mr. Breones, I'm never at a loss for words. I always have a lot to say. Everybody knows that. But I just want to congratulate you ladies, you know? One of the things that, uh, that I'm really proud of the Almani Union High School District is that not only do we recognize academics, but we also recognize athletics. And we have some amazing athletes and some amazing, um, academic students here. And you guys have both of those things, academics and, and the sport. So, uh, I'm so proud that you guys got the scholarships, that you guys are going to be going to Iowa and that you're going far away from California. Uh, some words of wisdom that I can tell you, particularly in Iowa, when you go there, people are not going to look like you. Straight up, okay? Uh, but you might feel like the imposter syndrome where like, oh my God, sister, like nobody looks like us here in Iowa. You belong there and you have the grit and you have the, the hard work ethic. So when that feeling comes, and I guarantee you it will come, because I went to school here in California to a private university and the higher up I went, from my bachelors to my masters, people stopped looking like me. And I knew I wasn't in El Monte anymore. But it's okay. When that time comes and you tell your mom, you call your mom, because you're going to want to come home, don't come home. You finished because you have earned that, you belong there and you need to be there. And that goes for you too, Mia. You know, you have some amazing parents and I want to give special kudos to Mr. Hector Delgado. It is because of Mr. Hector Delgado, or as I call him, the honorable Mr. Hector Delgado, because he is a councilman in the city of South El Monte. But it's because of Mr. Delgado that these young ladies, uh, have access to programs like wrestling, like Beat the Streets. Why is that important? Because if we don't create the access, if we don't create the right conditions, give them that encouragement, give them that support. And for us as a school board member, to put our money where our mouth is, that we are going to support athletics and whatever the girls need, whether it's mats or whatever. Not too long ago, okay, I'll air a little bit of our, a little dirty laundry in Almani Union High School District. And I say it because it has happened and that was Title IX. They were here. The Office of Civil Rights was on our butt. Why? Because we were offering more sports for boys than we were for girls and we should be called out for that. We've rectified it and now we've improved that. It is important that whatever we offer for boys, it equals and it mirrors what we offer for girls. That must be in the front of all of our faces as school board members. So when I talk about equity and access, and you know, there's times where I make comments and about oh, the Latino students that we're recognizing or the Asian students that we're recognizing or the white students that we're recognizing. It sometimes makes people uncomfortable, but it's okay because we need to have those uncomfortable conversations in order to truly give access to all students, not just Latinos, not just Asians, not just Caucasians, everybody. And I think in this district, we're not afraid to have those conversations. I know that every single one of my colleagues, we could care less what the neighboring school districts think of us or what they don't. As long as the programs that we're doing are getting to our students and that they're making it to Iowa and that they're get, making it to, tell me the university.
Sienna Heights University, Michigan. Michigan?
Michigan, okay? It's important that we, that we put that out there. So kudos to you guys, uh, kudos to, uh, Coach Tran. Um, uh, you, you were not a one-time state championship. How many times did you win the state championship? Two times, that's right. Let's not forget that. Let's give credit where credit is due. And also to Mr. Hector Delgado, you know, he was a wrestler himself and, and, and competed at a very high level. But now he serves, you know, he gives of himself, as does, uh, his wife. If you look, turn to the back, we have Ms. Angelica Garcia. If we could give her a round of applause, please. And I say, I give her recognition and I give her husband the honorable Hector Delgado recognition because, uh, Ms. uh, Angelica Garcia is also an employee of our school district. She's the Child Welfare Attendance Coordinator, uh, over at South Almani High School. And that tells you that, uh, these parents have the trust in Almani Union High School District to bring their children, for them to get an education here and excel at the level that they do. So thank you to all of the parents here. And when your daughters talk about, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez, is that the correct last name? That, that is amazing. I remember being a Rosemead High School student and, uh, my parents would not make it to my baseball, my, uh, basketball games. And I wouldn't say it back then, but it did hurt my feelings because I would see all the, uh, dads and moms who would come and kind of see their, their kids. And, uh, but I guess what gives me satisfaction or, or allows me, my mental health to be okay is that I knew that, uh, my parents were working. It wasn't that they didn't want to be there or parents don't want to be there. There's a lot of parents who would like to be there, but they just got to work and they got to think of their kids like, okay, do I go watch the sport? Or do I come up short with the rent and then we get evicted and end up homeless? Nobody wants that. But absolutely kudos to the parents, kudos to, uh, uh, the, the Delgado Garcia family. And again, thank you, Mr. Delgado, for bringing Beat the Streets here. I remember in the inception of that program where it started at Mountain View High School and you talking to some of our board members and say, please support it. Absolutely. And because of that support, we are able to increase the number of girls that are participating. Yes, we boys have always participated and we, we've always done that. Can we improve? Yes. But we need to create that access for young ladies, whether it's in wrestling, whether it's in computer science. Access is something that we must talk about and put our money where our mouth is. And for as long as I sit on this board and I know that the same goes for my colleagues because our philosophy of education for all of us here, whether it's Mr. Sarsido, Professor Torres de Segres, Mr. Breones or Mr. Diaz, we all, uh, will die on that hill of taking on that battle of anybody who doesn't want to, uh, provide equity and access to our students. We will take that, that fight on. And we, not only will we win the battle, we will win the war on that topic. So thank you, young ladies. It's a great day in, uh, uh, in America and in this district.
Over here hiding in the back because I don't want to see, everyone will see me cry, you know what I mean? Well, we're getting emotional. I wrestled just a few times in college, you know? Not, not, not like collegiately, like at the gym, I signed up for an intramural club. We wrestled, you know, type of thing. And I'm over here getting emotional. So, yeah, lucha libre, a little bit, yeah. There were, there were no masks involved, but, uh, but yeah, you know, just kudos to all of you. It's really impressive what you've been able to accomplish. I'm over here asking Mr. Delgado how many miles you all run a week, you know, just to get a comparison. Um, but yeah, it's just really, really, really incredible what you all have, have already accomplished. I think, um, everyone's said already a lot of stuff and so I think y'all know. But I think I will close with, um, this is the second time you're recognized. The first time it's virtually Google meets and then now we're here in person. I think the next time this board recognizes you, uh, it's going to be as Olympians. We're bringing home the gold, right? So like your coach says, this time we're going to manifest, see you later Olympians. So have a great night. Thank you to the parents. Thank you to Mr. Delgado, Mr. Tran for all your work. Congratulations again. Have a good night.
I won't lie that I get like secondhand ego boost from seeing you guys get recognized, especially because you're females and especially because it's a male-dominated sport. So I'm sure it's much harder. And I know what it's like to be in a room that's male-dominated, as you can see. Um, but I'm really, I'm really proud and it goes without saying that, like, I've received recognition and I'm sure that it means that much more to your parents. I've always said that my recognitions mean everything to my mom and dad. And the moment I get them, I just hand them to them and I'm just like, do whatever you want with it. Send a picture to my tia if you want, do whatever you want. So it goes without saying that we're really proud and I'm excited to see where you go next. And I'm sure that it's going to be really scary those first few days in your schools because I know what it's like to be in a room where you feel like you don't belong. But please stay there and just push through and know that you belong and know that we value all the work that you put in and we're cheering on from home. Um, and please don't forget about us, okay? I know it's a small town and I know that there's a lot going on here, but we're really proud and you really do make us look good. So we're very grateful. So thank you.
Yes, if we can get everybody in the front for some pictures.
Hey, guys, kudos to your all this year, college softball, pro wrestling.
Hey, guys, kudos to your all this year, college softball, pro wrestling.
pictures, and we'll regroup in five minutes.
Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Now we are moving on to the school site instructional report. Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, and welcome back again, and thank you for sticking around. It's my honor to feature the instructional report for this month from Rosemead High School. As you know, that we have spring break in April, so we normally try to do our best to combine the significance of the instructional report. That's why we set aside our special meetings, but we felt that this instructional report was critical to our timing of the school year as well. And I'm excited to have Dr. Bristow and his team here, who will make the introductions. So Dr. Bristow, you'll come up here, please, and then we will get started with the presentation for Rosemead High School Instructional Report. Welcome.
Well, hi. This is, this is crazy. This is great, being in person. And I, I want to thank the board and the Assistant Superintendent and Dr. Zuniga for having us tonight. The energy in the room is awesome. I mean, the ability to see our students be recognized, the things that they've done, both academically and athletically, can be experienced in all the schools, but it's been done at a very high level from what you saw earlier with the academic decathlon and also the wrestlers that came forward tonight. Every school has its parts, every school has its things and their accolades. What we chose tonight to focus specifically on our instructional report was the newcomer, the EL program, and the ELO programs that are going on at Rosemead High School, that were offered to all the schools in our district, thanks to the support of the school board, to the instruction department for the hiring through, through Ms. Torres and the business department, supporting us for that and the, and the vision that you had. And I know that both Mr. Banyas and Ms. Ing, who are here, Mr. Banyas being our, one of our assistant principals at Rosemead High School, and Ms. Ing being our English Language TOSA, have taken that on across the, across the school and have worked with other teachers to create a very powerful, very powerful after-school program, and a very powerful for our new, program for our newcomers. That being said, we have had, just as all the schools have had, a huge increase in our newcomers. We've had to open up two new sections for our newcomers, for English learners at our site. And we've got a great support crew, we've got great leadership from the top, and excellent leadership and, and support from our English TOSA, our teachers, and Mr. Banyas leading the way. So we have a short video for you in a little bit, that's going to speak a lot, but I want to turn over to Mr. Banyas for a moment, and then he's going to turn over to Ms. Ing.
Thank you, Dr. Bristow. Mr. President, members of the board, good evening and friends. For the past few years at Rosemead High School, when we think of instruction, we're not only focusing on the students in the middle or the students on top, but we also look at some demographics of our students. We also reviewed students' subgroups. And we've been working a lot for the two subgroups of our district as significant, one of which is our special education and our EL learners. And we're so happy at Rosemead that we were able to have the support of one of the best TOSAs in our district, Anna Ing, to help us out with what have we done so far to help our English learners in the process. These are the kids who have been struggling in most of our assessment results, and we just can't neglect and turn our back and say, forget it, we need to do something about it. So our presentation tonight will be focusing on our English learners, what we have done so far to support these students, and to ensure and make sure that they are succeeding at the same time, they have access to all the resources that we have, as well as grade level content and standards we are providing for, for, for all of them. So Ms. Ing?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bristow, thank you, Mr. Banyas. Good evening, board members, committee members, and also cabinets. So I am managing the EL TOSA at Rosemead High School, and tonight we are very pleased to share with you support that we provide to our English learners, both newcomers and long-term. So we create a video that will feature the academic and also social emotional support we provide to our students throughout the school year in different aspect. This video is going to feature the followings: EL mentorship, collaboration with teachers and staff, multicultural experience, expanded learning opportunity, our newcomer ELO program, and state assessment preparation, and also the reclassification. So as I said, that this video is going to speak a lot, and hopefully it's going to answer a lot of questions, but we welcome other questions after the presentation. So hopefully that you enjoy the presentation right now. Thank you.
The first 15 seconds, there is no sound, so it's okay. Be patient, come on. Be patient, come on.
So the girl said they'd rather be without her. They kept their home for everything. What about?
I like ELO because I learn English.
Hi, I like this program because it's fun, you learn more English cultures, and you have fun in this program.
Hi, my name is Tommy, and I like this program because it's fun and it's entertaining, and you learn so many things, like different cultures, and it shows you how to learn a lot of English.
Hi there, this is Dr. Bristol wishing all of you a congratulations. You've really worked hard to get this far and to get reclassified. I am so proud of you. You are actually better at knowing what you know than I am at knowing what I know. Thank you so much. So, as you can see, it was a comprehensive view of our newcomers, focused really on the ELO program, and what we do throughout the school, given Anna's leadership and Mr. Banyas' leadership. For our teachers, both the English, our EL teachers, as well as our other teachers in the general ed classes, giving them resources, giving them the padlets, giving them the opportunities to work with students at different levels. As well as, when it comes to LPAC testing and other things, helping the students understand why they're doing what they're doing, so that they can do better and put it in context. And because of that, our reclassification rate has been extremely high, and getting high every day or every year because of our two leaders here and our teachers at the school. Thank you.
If I may add to the reclassification preparation, I think this year we tried to separate our EL students who are taking the tests. We have seen that most of our kids have really exhausted their time that we allowed them to spend when taking the test. In the past, we combined our English learners with the general ed population, and you will see right away that after 10 minutes or 15 minutes, heads are down, those are EL students. They could hardly even finish reading the passages in the English performance class. This year, we tried of really prepping our kids and giving them a little preparation heads up a day or weeks before the testing, and right now, we have noticed that kids are really maximizing their time taking those assessments. And we are really, really proud of what Ms. Ng have done for that. And also, not on the video, most of our English learners or English teachers teaching English EL classes, we have provided them with our power educators, we have support, we have tutors that we filled into those classes with at least seven. We identified classes with what we call the classes with many EL students, and we provide them with tutors in the classrooms. Depending on the language that majority of those kids are speaking, so we're able to provide the support this year, and thank you for supporting us in that process as well.
So I also want to mention that any success of the students, it is a team effort, because everything is just like everybody's help. The parents on behalf, and then also teachers, staff, our administrators, and then also board members, so everything is coming along to help the success of the students. I was an English learner before, so it is kind of easy for me to put myself into their shoes and see the need of them, and try to see what is the best for the students. And then also, we have a very supportive team at the site, at the school, so I think that that just helps with the excel of the program. So I want to mention that if there's any question.
Comments, yes. I think it's great that our students got the ELO, the extended learning opportunities, and I know that those probably happened after school, correct? So it's great to see that, because yes, during the instructional day, you know, if these kids are going to ELD to learn the academic English and get the support in their core curriculum, whether it's English language arts or whether it's math, there isn't time to teach kids how to play, and it looks like there was a lot of fun activities, a lot of things that you can't do during the regular day. It's important for these kids to learn about the Chinese culture and the Latino culture, for them to see that they have so many things in common. And learning English is something that, they need to practice it, like a lot of our kids. And when I visit, and I know I'll see it, I saw it when I went to your open house, you know, I went to the room, I go look at the wall of fame of the reclassification. Why? Because as an English language learner, when I came from Mexico and when I got to high school, I needed that extra support. And so when we get our funding, and we get, you know, those are the kids that generate those dollars, English language learners, foster youth and homeless, and students and free and reduced lunch. So when I hear Mr. Banyas, when it comes out of his mouth like, "Oh, we sent some tutors over there," good, as a board member, I want to hear that, because you have to pay those tutors, right? So, and I know Mr. Larry Cecil kind of sits up, because he knows this is something that I always look at, because I know when we write our plans, we talk about what we do for all students, but we need to start looking at it, what we do for each student. So for me to hear that you're sending tutors to those classrooms that have high percentages of English language learners, you know that in some of those classes, not only do you have ELLs, you also have ALTls that have been here for a very long time, that were not born in Mexico or Korea or China or Vietnam, they've been students here in our system that are still like struggling, needing that support. So when I hear that the number of reclassified students in your school is getting better all the time, that's great, you know? But when I see a lot of that fun stuff that you can't teach during the day, and I talk to the teachers, like, what do you do? Well, we show them how to play a board game, how to do a lot of things that, you know, American kids from American culture already know. And some of our kids, unless somebody takes the time to share that with them or to show them or actually do it, because you could tell them all about it, you could tell them all you want, but until you actually do it, then they're like, "Oh, okay, this is what you do in America?" And it might be like something that for us as board members, like, we're so silly, really? We're spending that money on these kids playing these games? Yeah, it's important. As an English language learner, those things are very important, because you need a little bit of that fun stuff, so that then they can kind of work hard when it comes to that academic, to get the academic English. Because as we know, you know, there's the BICS, the Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills, that sometimes can be deceiving, as those of you that are English language learners. We think, "Oh my God, this boy speaks English so eloquently, and he speaks, you know, I can understand everything that he's saying." So what? That does not mean anything, that's only oral English. And you know that when we reclassify, sometimes the reclassification criteria can be so difficult. And I say that because there is no such thing as state reclassification criteria. Every district creates their own, you know? And so it's something that I look at, because sometimes it is so hard to get reclassified. And how does that affect English language learners? It affects them in that the number of A through G classes that they have to take, they have to take 15 just to be able to qualify. So if those kids are just taking ELD year after year after year, that means that these kids, English language learners, are not getting access to the rest of the curriculum, because that ELD has been haunting them since middle school, you know? And so they need to get reclassified so that they could take more of those 15 classes of A through G to be able to compete with the rest of the kids. So, thank you for ELO. I know the funding's going to run out pretty soon, but I'm glad that we're able to use those funds to help those students. But I also know that even without ELO funds, we get funding for those students, so I would hope that we would still spend some of those dollars, not just at Rosemead High School, but in our other places to continue to support and finance those extra programs that we were able to do with ELO. So thank you for what you guys do, and at the end of the day, you know, those students will let you know, like, when I hear you say, "Oh, the kids used to put their head down and, you know, as soon as they start taking the LPAC," I'm glad to see that you've prepped them, that you've prepared them for this test, because so much is riding on that test for those kids that they don't know that there's so much riding on those tests, unless you guys tell them. So thank you for paying attention to English language learners, and it's a great thing, it will always be a great thing, because it will help them academically as well.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. I do wonder today about our student athletes and our academic decathlons, scholars. It reminded me that our number one priority is always our students, and no matter what their accomplishments are, whether it's academic, whether it's athletic, whether it's linguistic, you know, acquiring another language is a very difficult thing to do as an adult and as a younger person as well. So when these students are new to a country, new to a different culture, new to a different school, it puts a lot of pressure on them. And we want to make sure that they're being recognized and that they understand that we are here to support them. So thank you again for being here tonight and sharing with us what it is that you're doing on behalf of our school district, on behalf of Rosemead High School, for our students.
No comments from me. Thank you for your work, thank you for your presentation, hope your families are doing well.
Thank you very much for this great presentation. From my, at the point of view of the linguistics, I can see that you are really working hard, and you are getting into the core of the problem with some of our students, that they learn how to speak English. The most important thing is here that one picture tells more than a dozen words. And with the picture, we're showing us this way, the way that you are showing the different cultures. We are living in a country where there are different cultures, and we have to accept them. And the first thing that we have to do is recognize my culture, and I let you know what's my culture, how is my culture, how is yours? And I respect yours, I respect mine. And in that way, you make the student to feel very secure. Linguistically, you make the student feel very secure in learning English and knowing another culture and getting along altogether. I really admire you, Dr. Bristol, and your team, you are doing a great job, and we're going to see the results pretty soon. And I know that you are going to have a great success. Thank you very much.
You know, one thing that comes to my mind is, after seeing that video, is validation. Not only validation for a student's own culture, because I know that for newcomers, it can be a scary thing, right? And so for them to come to campus and see, you know, themselves and others and this institution validating and appreciating their culture is huge, right? But also validating their accomplishments and recognizing, you know, that personal message for those that were able to reclassify and making it a big deal, because it is, you know? I mean, on top of what Mr. Padillo said, and Mrs. Delatorre de Seigres, and Mr. Briones, you know, kudos to you guys for having such a wonderful program, so keep it up. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Salcedo, may I comment?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. No, it's okay. Ms. Yang, I don't know if you saw this, but one day I went into the Language Center during lunch, because I had to make up a test for Ms. Queramonte, which I know she spends time there, helping out with the students. And I remember that you were all playing a game on the projector with the students. And so the basis, the premises that I got was that the students who participated would get an incentive at the end, so they would get a chance to be put in a raffle. And I walked into the room, and it was the first time I had been in that room, at least, and had seen so many students interact with each other. And I remember that there was a big sense of community. All the students were interacting and talking to one another, and bonding. And lucky for me, I speak Spanish, so I was understanding the conversations that were going on. But something that really impacted me was how the staff was talking to them, too. You were all having conversations with the students, asking them about their day, and that really touched me, because I was an English Language learner in elementary school at Wilkerson, and I was part of a bilingual program. And to see that interaction really comforted me, because like mentioned before, community means a lot to these students. And they're coming from different countries, and they're coming to a school where they don't know a lot of students, and having that room and that place where they feel like a sense of home, and having students connect to them. And also, like you said, just introducing them to different cultures is really important. So I want to thank you all for your work, especially you, because I know that you're one-on-one with these students and seeing them on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
If I may, real quickly, one thing with Ms. Ying's vision, and Mr. Bonas' support, and others, that the room that Zicla is talking about is a, I think, probably the only one in the district that's really cool. It's a, it's a language and cultural center, where these do meld together. We've got our parent liaison there, we've got support from Title I there, Ms. Ying's office is located there. And you can go in there during different times of the day, and the kids are just hanging out. They're having this conversation, and then when things get growing and they have activities, it's a large room, and it can become almost impacted. And it really kind of drew back, obviously, with COVID, but we're really looking forward, we're seeing it grow even more now, and we can't wait till next year. So that's really taken off because of their vision. So thank you for supporting that.
Thank you, Dr. Bristow. Okay, Dr. Zuniga, we're moving on to our next presentation.
Yes, thank you, President Salcedo. It's my pleasure again to introduce another team within our school district, who has teamed up with several organizations. As you know, the CARB grant and the Clean Mobility has taken off in Almonte Union High School District. We've been recognized and featured for the accomplishments that we have done throughout this grant, and the support that we received from local organizations to the state. So we're very grateful to be part of this grant as well. The Clean Energy Fellow is an individual who is here, and again, I am proud to say that she is a product of our school district. So this is, this is something that I did not anticipate to see someone talk about the program, but also went through our school district, and now is here in front of the board, presenting the outcome of what our initiative is now, and making that connection back to school when she was at Almonte High School. Here to introduce her as well is Lena Luna, our Facility and Energy Manager, and she also makes the introductions to the presentation as well. So I'm going to also hand it over to Mr. Altar, if he wishes to chime in. But as they make their way over here, I want to welcome everyone this evening, and thank you for being here with us.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm going to keep this quick, because Wendy has plenty to share. But I'd like to introduce Wendy Sanchez. She is a product of Almonte Union High School District. And when I had originally wrote the grant, I specifically wanted a Clean Energy Fellow, and I wanted to build human capital from within the community, and reached out to San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, pre-COVID days, when we used to go out and network with Almonte organizations. So I'm going to leave Wendy to this, because plenty more to explain, but here's Wendy Sanchez, and your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Wendy Sanchez, like Lena said. And I'm here to share my experience and my time with the, sorry, I was a little bit nervous. I'm here to share my experience and my participation in Almonte Union School District Clean Mobility's Pilot Project, which was possible by California Air Resource Board. As part of the educational commitment to the community, the district project included a fellowship program, and I'm proud to let you guys know that I'm the first fellow that was introduced into this program. Before I begin my presentation, we had created a video, which is the Clean Energy Fellowship video, and it will be shown in a sec. It's not a stranger to the air pollution. It is surrounded by freeways and constant traffic. I have seen how poor air quality can affect the community. I have also seen it affect some of my family. Hi, my name is Wendy Sanchez, and I'm the Clean Energy Fellow. I was excited to join the California Air Resource Board in the Clean Mobility in Schools Pilot Project.
We're one of only three districts to be able to partner with California Climate Investments. And to have Wendy be exposed to a project of this scope and magnitude is impressive. It's an amazing opportunity.
As a former student of Almonte High School, I thought it was a great opportunity to help out the students.
Wendy has been such an asset to our team. She really helped the school district deploy the Clean Energy Fleet in the Almonte Union High School District. She also had the opportunity to work with our project partners, San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, and Glass Team Neandros and Associates. It's been wonderful working with Wendy. It's been wonderful to see her grow and learn skills that are important and leadership goals.
Working with Lena has been really amazing. She's been a real great mentor. I have learned how to be part of meetings, and I have learned how to create action items out of that and take notes. I've learned a lot of office skills, Microsoft, Excel, PowerPoint, Word. She showed me how to read blueprints.
I showed her like how you read it, the indexes, the different pages.
You know, what we're doing is we're allowing an opportunity for our students to participate in an educational atmosphere that is ecologically and green-minded.
It was important to offer this Clean Energy Fellowship to someone like Wendy, because historically, Almonte has been underrepresented in this type of field. So it was important to give back, to make sure we had this knowledge transfer stay within our community.
One of my favorite memories from being part of the project was being part of the ribbon cutting for the Almonte District, and that was to introduce the electrical school buses into the community. I recently got a text from someone saying, hey, we saw one of your school buses driving by, that's awesome. That's been great, hearing that everyone else is getting to see what we're working on.
In the grant submission, I said it was about connecting community. It's about the people in the community first.
We're very proud of Wendy. She'll be able to pay that forward, and to move that along, and impact the lives of others outside of this project. It's a great opportunity for her and for us.
I think it's been really surprising that I can actually make a change myself, even though I'm one person. But one person can make another person listen and help the community as well. So, like I said, I am the Clean Energy Fellow, the first one, actually. And I'll probably need to skip to the next slide. So I wanted to start off by telling you guys a little bit about myself, even though the video did state it. I was, I'm a resident of Almonte, former Almonte Unified School District student. Though I didn't graduate from the district, I was introduced back into San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, where I got my diploma in 2020, and I am now a supervisor for their Something that interested me about this program was the job training component of learning different, I guess you can say, things, and just honestly, just giving back to the community. And I have some pictures showing of some of the projects that I've worked on at San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, planting elder leave trees and hidden houses. What I've learned, honestly, it's been a great experience working alongside Lena. She's been a really great mentor, as also has been Glass Team Neandros and Associates. They've been all great mentors. I've been shadowing Lena and different project areas, and also learning different components that make up the project. I've learned communication and project management skills, also all the bus functions in and out. But most importantly, I think, the thing I can take away the most from this is just the knowledge that I can improve the quality of the life in the district and in our community. Where I'm going right now, one of my biggest things that I would love to pursue would be environmental field. This project has been a really good, I guess, asset to that, since it showed me about the clean energy and how it affects the environmental area as well. Either way, I've gained a lot of skills, and I hope to pursue any of these careers. Some of the things that I can say that I can take away are leadership skills, management from Lena, and communication skills. Before this, I can say I was really shy. I still feel like I'm really shy, I've been trying to get out of my shell and speaking. Computer skills, which is something I didn't do before, just basic skills like Word, I didn't use it before. Research skills, and a lot of different note-taking, and just in general, all around, everything that has to do in our office. I learned tabling as well, which is something I've never done before. And here's an example of myself tabling at the ribbon cutting, and being part of one of the school buses introductions. Here are some of the on-hand experiences that I had. I was able to participate in a vehicle, maintenance vehicle training at the South Almonte site. We got to learn about the insides and outs of the maintenance vehicles, and how they function. I was also able to participate in a filming in South Almonte High School, where I got to see a lot of the students that were really excited to see the new electrical school buses. Was also able to be part of the first test drives of the electrical school buses, and I think that's about it for the experiences. And everything that I wanted to say is just thank you for the opportunity for having me here, and the opportunity from Almonte School District, and thank you.
Wendy, can you believe they still haven't let me drive electric bus? It's still on the to-do list here. I have a certificate of recognition for you. On my day job, I'm your neighbor, so we're both at the Jeff Seymour Family Center, and the SGV Conservation Corps, and active SGV regularly work together. We want to grant together, right? FRI, is it? It's not fire, it's FRI. Can you say the acronym real quick? There you go, Youth Engagement. One of the things that we at the Almonte High School District believe in is that the climate crisis is real. I've said this a number of times, the number of days above 94 are going to grow from 32 to 74, above 95 degrees by 2050. So in summary, it's going to get really hot, and communities of color, low-resourced communities are the ones that are impacted the most whenever energy costs go up. And so it's incredibly important that we continue building, I think you said, human capital, within our communities to be able to survive, really. And so that's why I'm extremely proud of this project. I'm extremely proud to have an Almonte resident be a fellow here. We need to identify, train, and prepare folks for the next generation of, like, environmental leaders. And so it's really cool that you had this opportunity. I'm looking forward to many more opportunities, where maybe we can have an Almonte Union High School District Corps of Fellows, right, that work across different projects on our campus. So really, congratulations to you. I'm glad that I know we're neighbors now, right? So we're going to visit each other. And then also, at the Jeff Seymour Family Center, we're actually applying for a grant, we applied for a grant, to bring in electric truck, electric scooters, electric bikes, electric cargo bikes, electric tricycles for our families to be able to rent on a weekly, monthly basis, at minimal cost. So you'll see them there, hopefully, pretty soon. So this certificate of recognition is presented to you, Wendy Sanchez, for your contributions and commitment as the first Clean Energy Fellow with the Clean Mobility in School Project. Congratulations from the Almonte High School District, Board of Trustees. Here you go. And here's a picture. And thank you, Lena, for writing the grant. We appreciate it. We got to follow up. We're really a model. We're really a model, and we got to keep doing it. You know, it's very much necessary. So thank you, Lena, so much for your work. And Mr. Altar, as well. Thank you.
Comments from board members?
Oh, yes, of course. I really would like to give you thanks. I don't know if you remember, about 30 years ago, this city was really with bad pollution. You couldn't see the mountains. One day, and they started to clean the environment, and I discovered that the mountains were there before we couldn't do it. But we have to keep having, cleaning the air. We have to keep working. It's obligation of all of us. And this program that you started is wonderful. It is wonderful, because everybody, we have to give a little, a little tiny thing, and you are doing a big thing in helping us, especially in the mobility in schools. Thank you so much. This is a great program, and I'm very happy that you are with us. And especially, you are another important people in our high school, graduating from our high school. It means that you are doing a lot of things, and bringing them back to our high school, good things. Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Padilla?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Lena. Lena, you know, behind every student, there's always people that help you get there. Thank you for your leadership, and for being such a great role model, you know, for being a professional, and for showing her the way of all the things that you do in your job. We saw today, you know, the power of mentorship, whether they're coaches, whether it's academic coaching, whether it's athletic coaching, there's always some people behind you that will help you get to where you want to get to. And Wendy, I'm so proud of you. You know, you're very articulate. At the beginning, you were a little nervous, but when you, once you got going, you got comfortable and told us exactly what you're doing. Thank you for being a fellow, and for talking about clean energy and protecting our environment. You know, Mr. Diaz always talks about that, and uses his bike, and, you know, is talking about trying to get on that bus. They still haven't let him drive, as you heard. But one day, he will get to drive that clean bus. But I loved it when you said, oh, my friend saw that, the bus, and they're like, oh, there goes one of your buses. So people are associating clean energy with Wendy Sanchez and Lena Luna. But I also want to thank Mr. Rene Mendoza, who's here, from the San Gabriel SGVCC, also a great person there. He's a Sustainability Coordinator at SGVCC. Did I get that correct?
Yeah, two years ago.
Two years ago. What's your new title today?
Associate Director.
Associate Director, I apologize.
Nonprofit.
Yes, yes, it does matter, because, you know, I'll tell this story really quick. I run a nonprofit right next door to the SGVCC Center, which is located in the Jeff Seymour Family Center, and, which is a nonprofit that helps kids, that helps provide food to needy families. So whether we're protecting families, or we're protecting the environment, we're all working towards a common cause of creating a better Almonte, or a better neighborhood for our families. But a couple months back, we were installing new shelves at the Jeff Seymour Family Center and I remember that I needed some volunteers, some young fellows or young people to come and give of their service free of charge. And I will never forget that Mr. Mendoza said, no problem, I'll get you some kids. It was on a Saturday, last minute, and he said, I'm there. And if I can't get them, I will come and do it myself. And sure enough, he brought, he brought some kids, came himself and, and we put all those shelves together, you know, to help families with food insecurity. But everybody, we're all working towards the common cause, you know, and I thank you for that, Wendy. Whether you graduated from El Monte, whether you graduated from SGVCC, you know, I know SGVCC and I want to give a big plug for them. They always help our kids and they always give them a second chance and they tell them that they are, you know, special kids and they motivate them to keep going, not to give up and to give of service to the community. And I know they do construction, they do so many different trades that they bring those young kids in and, not young kids, young men and young women. And I see the pride that they're, that they've had, that they have, you know, when they painted the Jeff Seymour Family Center or any activity that they get engaged in, just like you getting engaged in this clean mobility, you do it with pride and you do it with the sense of, of leaving this world a better place. And so I applaud you for that, Wendy. Thank you very much. And again, Lena, I know you also have some staff over here that, that helps you out. Can you please introduce them and have them stand up? Because it's all a team effort. It's all, please tell us who they are and... Yes, thank you, thank you guys for what you do and for helping our, our students and members of the community. And it must be a joint effort. We must attack it from so many different ways and we need experts in the field. So hopefully you'll stay in the, you know, clean mobility and stuff because I do, I do see that we might lose you to, you know, probation or a teacher, which would also be, be awesome. So thank you guys and thank you. And yes, Mr. Elatar, at the end of the day, you're the top dog there with the CBO and keeping it all together. So thank you to everyone and to my colleagues. I appreciate that. Thank you, Wendy. Your parents should be proud.
Mr. Bionis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wendy, thank you so much for being here with us today. I know speaking in front of a, of any size audience can be an entirely daunting, you know, experience, but let me tell you, you did well. You did great. I think having these positions, first I want to say thank you to Ms. Luna for including this in the grant that we received from CARB because these opportunities are not opportunities that our community members normally have access to. And I think it's incredibly important that we give folks from our community those, access to participate in fellowships like this. A lot of our community members don't know what this is. A lot of our students don't know what this is. And we don't serve an affluent community where there's a lot of networking going on. So it's through opportunities such as this that it exposes our students and our community members to a lot more going on in the business world, you know, in the nonprofit sector and, and other locations. So Wendy, you know, you did great. I'm looking forward to what you're going to do in the future as well. You know, I'm happy to see that you're with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, organization that I've worked with in the past, who does an amazing job helping young people, not only here in El Monte, but throughout the San Gabriel Valley. And it's a, it's a testament to the dedication of the school district and this board to our community that you're here today. And so I wanted, again, just thank you for your words and your presentation and providing us that update on the fellowship and to the staff for all your hard work as well. Not only our staff here at Almani Union, but this external staff as well, who has worked with us as partners on this project. You know, I think we can genuinely say that we are leading the way on green energy here at Almani Union High School District. And this is just one way in which we, we will showcase it. So continue the excellent work. I look forward to seeing more of you in the future and I wish you the best in whatever you decide that you want to do in the future as well. Congratulations.
Well, Wendy, you know, I'm very happy that you're here sharing your experience and also grateful that you spoke a little bit about SGVCC and Ms. Luna and kind of the role they played in, in getting you here, right? From getting you to finish diploma to offering you this opportunity and being the first fellow, right, for, for this program, I think it's fantastic. We do have to create those opportunities and it's with, within us here, you know, the board and, and the district administration to do things like this and, and give our own students that opportunity because we know that if they're presented with those opportunities, they're going to come through with flying colors the way you have, Wendy. This past weekend, I was in San Diego for the National School Board Association and one of the, the vendors, I don't know if it was A to Z or Bluebird or one of those, but I was, I was swinging by and, you know, was checking out the electric bus that they had there. Mr. Diaz, they didn't let me drive it, but I did get in it. But they could not stop talking about Lena Luna. I swear. There was another gentleman there that was not aware, but, oh man, they just went on and on and on. I, I have the gentleman's card in, in my car. I'm going to email it to you, but they could not speak more highly of you. You know, they went on about, you know, oh, we just borrowed a bus two weeks ago because we were showing it off or, you know. Anyway, they spoke very highly of you and honestly, as a board member, I could not have been prouder. You know, and it's, you know, yes, they were talking about you, but you're such a, a strong representative for us. I just wanted to thank you personally because nothing makes me prouder as a board member to hear someone speak so highly of our employees. So thank you so much. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you.
Dr. Zuniga?
No, I echo the celebrations and the accolades that you have received today. Our job is to prepare our students to, to lead and lead the industry that, you know, we're all trying to advocate for, a better place to live for, not only you and our families, but also our, our future students and for generations to generations, from, from buildings to vehicles to clean energy to the food we provide to our students every day. I think you recognize that having that experience and looking at our facilities, you know, how we've come a long way as when we were kids and what we were eating on campuses and from what the autobus we were driving on the way to games and even the air that we breathe every day around our freeways and, and in our local neighborhoods too. So we'll continue to work together and we hope that you can continue this partnership that, you know, you started as part of the fellow. So I'm proud of you and just looking forward to see what your, you know, maybe your, your next adventure is going to be. Live your life, advocate for your community, and this is one way to do it and be proud of it. So congratulations.
Sorry, Dr. Zuniga, I took you out of order. Ms. Palacios?
No worries. I'm constantly inspired by your drive for clean energy. And I was just looking at the presentation and your where I am going presentation focuses on how you want to go into the environmental field, probation work slash youth, teacher and management. And those are all public spheres, which is really inspirational because you want to serve the community and that means a lot to us. And clean energy isn't as accessible, especially in this community. So your emphasis to really work on that and improve that, especially for our students, really means a lot to me and I'm sure it means a lot to so many other countless students. So thank you for your dedication, your hard work. And to Ms. Luna, thank you for being her mentor because I'm sure she's, she appreciates it and she's learning from the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
And now we move on to Mr. Leroy Ciso and for a A to G completion improvement, completion plan. Mr. Ciso? That's what's on our slide also. Maybe the wrong thing was attached? That's what was attached to ours. Want to take a recess?
Hey, you know the stuff.
Good.
So, the, what you see up there is the plan. Just giving you an overview of what this plan is all about. This is another plan.
It, our other four plans that we have, and they're kind of lines up. This is an A to G completion grant that we're going to receive. And the way you get this is if your A to G completion rate is less than 67%, then you qualify for it. This is going to be approximately a little under $3 million total in a grant. And, and the whole thing with all these grants is how they line up. For instance, you saw a little bit of presentation today about our ELO and how we're using the funding for that. All our schools are doing that same type of program, we're building that. So it's how you leverage things. And give you a little bit of background, we have the elementary and secondary school relief funds, which goes until September 24th, or September 24. And I know Mr. Padilla talked about the ELO, that also goes till September 24, the funding for that. So we have to spend all those funds by September 24th. Both the elementary and secondary school relief, yes, sir. Our expanded, expanded learning opportunity goes until September 24th, or September 24. The LCAP SC, which is ongoing every year. And then you have the educator effectiveness, which goes till September 26. And this grant goes till September 26 also. So what you, what we're looking at is with this grant is a couple of the requirements is, is how does it line up with our data we have right now? And what we've had to do is we had to, yeah, I know you're trying to pull it up. No, that's not. Yeah, that's a, that's the, let's see. No, that's not it. Don't worry about it. I'll just go through this, okay? So what we're doing right now is this has data that we have to look at from the, from our last 2021 school year and the A to G completion. One of the challenges we had during the 2021 school year is we are distance learning. What we found were the A to G, and I'll give you some data here. Some of the challenges we had was, let me go to it. Here we go. So last year, 2021, we had 53% of our students did not receive a D or an F. But we had 47% received one D or an F last year. That's a lot. 47% of our students got a D or F on the report called for fall and spring. Okay? So also, when you look at it last year, when you look at DNF rates last year, is we had 26% of our seniors last year received a DNF. We had 28% of our freshmen received a DNF last year. So the whole goal of this grant here is to lower those numbers, to lower the DNF numbers so all grade levels. And what we're looking at doing with this grant is actually starting mentor programs. We're really, as we roll out our synergy, we, we're getting better with our synergy program, it's amazing. And they have a great MTSS dashboard we're going to roll in. What we're looking at for next year is early intervention. How do we get these kids? So like, for instance, if they're getting a DNF, how can we circle back and right away make up those classes so they stay A and G ready? One of the challenges we're seeing is in math. Math is a killer for the A to G. What we're seeing last year, we had a higher DNF rate with ninth graders because they've been out of school half of their, their eighth grade year and coming into high school is a little more rigorous. And they haven't been on campus, they're on campus all year. And to give that support, we found that we had a very high DNF rate with ninth graders. That's 26% of the ninth graders last year got a DNF on their report card. We also found that 28% of our seniors also, a higher rate. But what we have found that a lot of the seniors, when AB104 kicked in, that kind of the end of the year, they're giving up. They said, okay, I just need to pass these classes, I'm good, I'm going to graduate. That's what we're kind of finding with that. Where your juniors had a 22%, of the juniors received a DNF and we had the 10th graders 24%. Okay? So when we go to the overall, the whole purpose of this, this grant, let me go to that page to get to it. The, the ongoing activities that we really plan on using these funds for is number one, data will be reviewed annually to identify and target needs of students. This lines up with our ELO grant, our SR grant, our LCAP grant, it's like we talked about before. When these funds run out, what are we going to do? One of the things we will do is roll it back into the S and C grant to make sure that these, these programs, and it's also looking at data. And one of the things we're looking at now is how are we going to use like cut points? You know, when we look at a cut point, what I mean by cut points is, okay, let's look at students their first three weeks of school, ninth graders. What support do we need to give them? When we look at our ELD program, our newcomers, that's a great mentoring program. So we need to create these, more of these mentoring programs for students and using these funds to leverage that and constantly look at the, the success of the, of the students. Same thing, we talked about the Equity and AP programs. We're looking at that and saying, okay, how can we mentor these students, give them the confidence, give them the courage, give them the support to go into those classes and be successful and to monitor them with our dashboards, with synergy, the MTSS dashboard they have there and monitor and having teams of staff look, okay, this kid's falling behind, how are we going to support this kid? So every kid will pretty much have an individual education plan. So that's our goal with using these funds. And when we look at the, the Hispanic population, when we talk about the AP pro, or the AP program, that's part of the A to G success program. So we're going to be looking at all these different programs, using this to leverage with our other grants that we have. And when we look at professional development, we have the Educator Effectiveness Grant also. So to provide that programs for our educators and mentoring them and getting them to understand how to mentor students. So this is what the overall of this grant is all about. It's about giving us more investing monies to support our students for the A to G success rate. So I'll, I'll give you the data on Friday's memo, I'll kind of map it all out for you so you can see it. But again, this is one of the next steps of our grants that we've gotten and we're, one of our big, we're in this season now is we're going crazy because we're really looking at for next year, how we're going to leverage all these funds and put them together, they support each other. Because when you look at, for instance, the mentoring program, it's in our S and C grant, it's in our ELO grant, it's in our SR grant. So we really look at how can we use these funds to, for the benefit of our students and how are we going to monitor, how are we going to look at data on a, really a weekly basis? You know, not just, you know, every six months or year and say, okay, last year we had a DNF rate of 58%. No, after three weeks, where are we with math? Where are we with that kid that's going to sit in that math class in three weeks? Are we going to, if this kid is falling behind, are we going to just not do anything until the next year and they just take the class again? Are we going to intervene right there? And that's what we want to do, intervene right there and say, okay, let's go back and find out what's going on. Our goal next year even is to give the kids the math inventory at the beginning of the year, to find the skill levels, to start getting that support right away. Because we want to make sure these, we really improve the A to G, the college-going culture, the AP programs, so it all falls in together. the college-going culture, the AP programs, so it all falls in together. So that's basically what this grant's all about, and that's kind of the introduction to it. I will give you more information on Friday. I'm sorry we didn't have that presentation on the, tonight. But in a nutshell, that's what it is. Okay, any questions? I hope I kind of explained it a little bit to you so you kind of understand it, what the A through G grant is.
Mr. President? Go ahead, go ahead.
I was thinking in the program that you say that is the EOL, the one that makes the students having enthusiasm, that they feel happy.
That's the expanded learning opportunity grant. We, every, all our fundings have mentoring aspects to it. But we're using our ELO grant to fund that program right now.
And have you studied, how come this part makes the students to have success?
It all like Anna. Anna's incredible. And we have this program at our schools. And when we look at success of one school, how are we going to use that? Were there successes? And we rolled out to the other schools, hey, they're successful here. We're seeing success. Now, we've pivoted this stuff here. Let's go over here and let's kind of see what we can do there. Every school has its own culture and teachers do things differently. She's actually doing an amazing job. And our other ones are too, but some are kind of growing slower than others. But they're all growing. And we're not giving up on any of them. We continue, okay, let's show growth. What are we new? Do, what kind of adjustments do we need to make in our programs to continue that success?
That is very, very... Yes, that makes sense because that's very important. When the student feels comfortable, feeling that he's good, he can keep on going. He's not going to give up.
Okay.
That's the thing about it.
Thank you. Mr. Cecil, have we identified a target percentage that we want to get to of students completing A through G requirements?
What, right now, what they see on this grant is, is we qualify because we're under sixty-seven percent A through G completion. We're at fifty-four percent. But that's for our last school year. We were hiring that prior to the, you know, COVID nineteen. So our goal is to get at least seventy, seventy-five. We'd love to be a hundred percent, to tell you the truth. But we're really looking at, okay, we want to show growth every year. And it's like when you go back to the old days of the KC, you know, the goal is a hundred percent. And I'm going to stick to that goal of a hundred percent. And my thing is, is like, we don't want to leave, it's like the old saying, leave no child left behind. We don't leave anybody behind. Whether it's our newcomers, it's our AP kids that can be successful. It's the kids that are going to go to Berkeley, Harvard. We want to support those. We want to support our newcomers that haven't been in school in years. And what are we doing with every kid in our district? And how are we showing support for every student? Whether it's an ELD kid, a newcomer, an LTAL student, a student with special needs. Next year, part of this grant is, it talks about every kid has to have access to an A through G program. We will have that at La Desma next year. We will have access, where a student goes to La Desma, they have access to an A through G program at La Desma. So, because sometimes students go for different reasons to La Desma. So we will make sure that we have that program at La Desma High School next year, an A through G program.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that because that was going to be my follow-up. I had seen in the grant application that was submitted to us, and that's online, that beginning in fall of twenty-twenty-two, which is this upcoming school year,
Yeah.
the classes at La Desma will be college prep classes.
Yes.
And I had this conversation with Dr. Zuniga when we were discussing this item. The fact that a lot of students who go to La Desma go for, as you mentioned, different reasons, not necessarily academic reasons.
Yes.
Students who are at La Desma are incredibly intelligent, bright individuals who should have the same access to courses as students in a comprehensive high school. And I'm glad to see that because a student who's at La Desma should have the same opportunities
Absolutely.
to go into a university or college. Absolutely nothing wrong with going to a community college, you know, after high school. I'm the product of community colleges. But I want to make sure that students who are at La Desma, for whatever reason, have that access. I'm really happy to see that.
It's one of those things that Mr. Artiaga, myself, we've been talking about along with Kirk McGinnis, is that we want to make sure that we have, we have a program over there. Say you have a student that has, deals with a lot of stress, anxiety, and really the large comprehensive high school is not the place for them. We want to make sure that, because we have the wellness center, we have the support of La Desma. And, but the student may say, you know, I don't want to do independent study. I don't want to do OPL. But I want a smaller learning environment that is more, you know, where I feel more comfortable in. So we could send them to La Desma, or the kid will go to La Desma, and the kid can still go to Harvard, Yale, Princeton. We want to offer those same opportunities at La Desma that they would get in a comprehensive high school. But like you said, they could be going there for a different purpose. And not just academic because they're not doing well academically. It could be a social-emotional issue why they want to go there and be part of a smaller environment where they're really, it's that really that tier-three support. And tier-three support doesn't mean, you know, academic. It could be social-emotional support. The academics is there, but they need that social-emotional support on a tier-three level. And that's why you have La Desma. It's a true tier-three program.
Absolutely, thank you. And to your point, La Desma, yes, it's an alternative placement, but it should still be a college prep environment.
Absolutely.
And I'm very happy to see that as part of this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz? No, Mr. Palio?
Yeah, but let's just be clear. I mean, many of the kids that are in Fernando La Desma, it is because of academics.
Yes, it is.
Many of them are there. Let's be clear. I've done this for thirty years.
Yeah.
But the beauty of Fernando La Desma is that we don't continue to do what we've always done. Like if you send them out of a Royal High School, a Rosemead High School, and they haven't failed, they failed in the regular comprehensive high school, why are you going to repeat more of the same? Which is the beauty. And the word that you were looking for, it's a more personalized curriculum
Absolutely.
that you give them there. Because if you give them the same thing that they did at Rosemead, and, you know, the five classes or six classes, they're going to fail. It's just going to be at a new location. And that's the beauty of Mr. Artiaga and the whole, the staff there, is that they personalize the program of why they're there. But I'm glad, you know, three million dollars, and this is for the next three years or it's for...
Till twenty-six.
Till twenty-six, okay? You know, it pretty much just complements all of the other funding that we get, whether it's ELO, whether it's SR, LCAP, S and C, the educator effectiveness grant. You know, pour the money into our students. In terms of A through G requirement classes, okay? There's fifteen total, okay?
Yes.
And while we have this discussion, it is an issue of access, okay? So, I mean, I'm kind of sad that we qualify for A through G because we're at, you know, below sixty-seven percent. You said fifty-four. I mean, that's pretty close to fifty percent of our students
Yeah.
aren't having access to, you know, the Cal State system, the UC system, or the private universities.
Absolutely.
Why? Because they don't even meet the regular fifteen. Or as I tell my parents when I train them, you know, we pay a lot of attention to quinceañeras. We need to pay a lot of attention to the number fifteen. Fifteen is the number of classes that you have to take just to qualify for A through G to be eligible. So if we only have fifty-four percent of our students being eligible, what we could do with those other students is talk to them about community college.
Yes.
You know, we need to probably maybe add that into some of this funding for somebody to talk to them. And yes, at the same time, letting them know that because you don't have the fifteen A through G classes, then that makes you ineligible to apply for the Cal State system. But we have an awesome community college system, whether it's Pasadena City College, which works a lot with us, whether it's Rio Honda College. And what we've known, you know, in my thirty years of education, is that not everybody wants to go to college. And that's completely acceptable. There are some very reputable and respected careers in career tech education. So I'm glad when I have these compelling conversations with you about what are we offering? Whether it's construction, whether it's plumbing, all the different CTE pathways that we have. And I'm glad that we're paying more and more attention to that in our master's schedule. Is it a challenge? Yes, it's a challenge because we basically do our master's schedules around academic classes for the Cal State system and the UC system. Where do we have our challenge? Our challenge is that at each high school, we can't offer the same CTE because it's all based on the staff that we have at Rosemead High School. And who, from those teachers, who has the extra experience in the medical field? Who has the extra experience in construction? Who has the extra experience in the different career pathways that we have? So I'm sad that we qualify for the A through G grant, but I'm happy that we qualify because we can put some money into having some of those conversations with those students of the alternatives that they have. Because just like Mr. Breones says, yes, I want access for Fernando La Desma high school students, you know, but if they don't have those fifteen A through G, I don't care what all of us board members want. The UC system sets the guidelines of how many A through G classes you need to have. Like, and if you don't have it, then you can't compete. You can't even get access to it because that's going to keep you. So if we're going to be looking at A through G, and like you say, the freshmen had such a high DNF rate, you know that when a freshman falls behind, it is so difficult to catch them up. It's not impossible, but they need to work their butts off. But it's tough. And so I'm glad that you're looking into early intervention. And, you know, you're talking about synergy, the new student information system that we have. I'm glad that you guys are getting more familiar with that, to do early identification because it does suck that a kid sits through integrated math one for, you know, as long as they do. And then the only alternative that we have is to take it again.
Yes.
Now they're behind in, you know, IM two. And then there isn't enough years to catch them up. So I'm glad we have that funding to keep our finger on the pole.
Just to let you know real quick is, one of the things, our conversation since on La Desma, is we've been having meetings with his team over there on these subjects, is we will offer dual enrollment classes over there next year, where kids will be able to take college counseling one-on-one. We're looking at a sports, a sports, I mean, a training program, a certificate training program, dual enrollment. So we're offering more college classes, get them into that system.
Yes.
A through G completion, more social-emotional support for the students. So this whole A through G, this is just in alignment with all our other grants that we have, that we can leverage our funding to really be real effective for all our students from the, again, from the newcomers all the way up to the students who are already going A through G and AP completion.
I just want to be crystal clear that some of our students that go Fernando La Desma, we can want all they want for them. The Cal State system and the UC system have a system in place. And if they don't have the criteria, it's not going to happen.
Yes.
You know, I wish, I wish we could, and I agree with Mr. Breones. But I'm glad that we continue to have this talk, that those kids do need access to that. But at this time, it might be community college, get your AA degree, associates of science, associates of arts. And then you'll be able to transfer wherever you want. And then the playing field begins to level off. You know what I mean? Like, you'll be, it might, it takes you a little longer, but it's important for those kids to know you can't get there.
Absolutely.
You do have access. Don't give up because you don't have your fifteen A through G right now. And I say that because even if we, even our kids in El Monte Union that have the fifteen, you know how hard it is to get into Cal States or UC. If you're just like, it's hard to get in just with the, with meeting the minimum. Fifteen classes is the minimum. All of our kids in El Monte Union High School District do that. And then they take all those other classes, the AP classes and the additional electives that they choose that are academic electives, that count towards that competitiveness of getting into these universities. Because at the end of the day, universities want the cream of the crop. If you're a low student, you're like, I'm not taking you, Larry Cecil. You might not graduate. You're going to make my graduation average go down. Keeping it real. That's what they do.
Ms. Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Salsedo. Obviously, I think that it's really important to try and increase the access to, for all of our students.
Yes.
And I think that my big thing is like, I want to see how this goes, or how this develops a year from now. Because it's very easy to present these things and very, very easy to be sold on it. And look at all this stuff, access to on-demand tutoring, advisement and support on meeting A through G requirements, field trips to college and universities. But I just want to see like, the byproduct of that a year from now. So I'll be checking in. Expect me over there with public comments. But I'll be back, and I hope to see improvement. You know how I feel about access. You know how I feel about making sure that all of our students feel seen and heard and feel that this community cares about them. So I really hope to see something come out of this.
Yeah.
I have faith in this district, but you'll be hearing from me, is all I got to say.
I love it. No, I just, I'll say this, is that one of the things we're, and it's really one of those things as we, this is, this has been the last couple, tough couple of last years. And as we gear up for next year, and this is one of the things, we're spending endless hours now on lining everything up, planning everything out. Really, as we, you know, we're ending the school year, but we're also planning summer school next fall. We're looking at how we're leveraging our funding, how we're going to do our support, what kind of professional development we need, how we can support with our new synergy in the dashboard. We're going to be, you know, we've had one under arms. How are we going to transfer that information and looking at data on a, on a regular basis and building those data teams to look at that data and analyze the data and then have action to it? And also getting the kids out and about to really, you know, number one, mentor, and also create a grit in them to go after their goals, their dreams, their ambitions. So yes, thank you. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Cecil.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to student board member communication. Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Salsedo. Starting with the fact that we had our student advisory council meeting on Monday. That's my second-to-last meeting, so it's getting a little sappy and sad in those meetings. We took nominations for upcoming student advisory council president and student board member. And I will give you guys a list of nominees so you can keep your eye out. So for nominees, we have Karen Andrade from Arroyo High School, Sofia Hernandez from Rosemead High School, Ruin Carrasco from South El Monte High School, and Anissa Robles from Mountain View High School. So we'll be starting the election process in May. Our May meeting is on May sixteenth. That'll be the last student advisory council meeting of the school year. That will also be our election meeting, and that'll be my last meeting as student advisory council president. We're also working to create a committee to review the youth truth survey results. So we're considering having a presentation for that in the May meeting. And for pluses and deltas with regards to the March resolutions, we had the resolutions of Women's History Month, and we also had National Nutrition Month. So we're, I'm just going to list out everything that all of our schools did. So for Rosemead, they partnered with one of their clubs, Sagas, to have a spirit day. They wore purple to celebrate International Women's Day and had an activity where people stuck on Post-it notes, women that inspired them on a poster. And the participation was high, and according to our rep, it was fun and an interactive thing for students to do. For South El Monte High School, they decided to take a different approach and highlight women in their community, specifically on their school campus. Not only did they decide to highlight women in their community, but during the morning announcements, they also highlighted important figures throughout history and gave quotes about them. For El Monte High School, there were several posters that were scattered throughout their campus, raising awareness on some female issues. And for Arroyo High School, throughout the month, they spotlighted significant figures throughout the month, had done, and did infographics on how Women's History Month had started and its significance. And for Fernando La Desma, in ethnic studies, Mr. Lawrence highlighted and celebrated Women's History Month by honoring Sor Juana Inés de la Cruz. They discussed her biography and how her letter published by the Bishop of Puebla is often considered the first feminist manifesto. She defended women's intellectual rights and is an inspiration and important to feminism and Latinx culture. And for Mountain View High School, they did morning announcements. For Quote of the Day, they highlighted an inspiring woman by using one of her quotes. And for National Nutrition Month, Rosemead posted about different nutrition and healthy recipes and had a spirit day where students dressed up as fruits or vegetables, which is an interesting spirit day. I was there. And we also had a lunchtime activity that was called Steal the Fruit. It was creative and allowed for students to make their own great costumes. For South El Monte High School, they had national nutrition lines, were decided in their morning announcements to post a healthy food option, varying from vegan options to a normal option that all students would enjoy. For El Monte High School, posters were always up in the cafeteria, and the cafeteria staff reminded them constantly to take a fruit because, you know, it's part of our meal. And then Arroyo High School posted different healthy nutrition recipes, such as banana oatmeal pancakes, as well as honey garlic salmon. For Fernando La Desma, Mr. Davis included nutrition talks before all his walks in the quad. And for their PE students. And for Mountain View High School, they said that they weren't able to integrate this as much, but the lunch ladies in the cafeteria were encouraging with the national nutrition facts. And I also just wanted to mention, to thank the board and Dr. Zuniga for promoting the article. I've gotten a lot of comments and emails from various different teachers and students that I haven't even met personally, but just getting those emails and getting that feedback has really helped. And just hearing from Mr. Cecil and from various other principals that they're trying to work on it, and they want my feedback and my input. want my feedback and my input has been really amazing. Even a meeting with Dr. Bristol, I met with him last week to talk about the article and just what we could do moving forward. I'm glad they were having those discussions and I hope that they don't die off after my last meeting. I will be here for the May special meeting because I'm trying to grasp onto these last moments of your student board member. So just be aware and I'll be around. Don't worry. I live in this community. So you're not going to get rid of me soon. Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. Dr. Zuniga?
Thank you, President Breone, I mean, President Salsedo. We have a, just a short presentation for you this evening, given the amount of presentations we had. But I feel that it's important to keep you abreast of what has occurred in March and also what we anticipate for April and into the end of the school year. So I'll keep it short and sweet and start off with the first slide that I have here is really highlighting some of the things. The only fourth slide if you just want to. Thank you. Our March Madness at Almonte Union High School District, if you recognize what the March Madness theme is, is basketball tournament. If you saw the game on Monday, you know that the Jayhawks won.
Yes, my Duke lost.
Won and North Carolina Tar Heels, whoever was rooting for them was a great game overall though. But our game is what's happening and what you heard today. Lots going on on the instructional side of the house and also on the business side of the house, right? And not to say that all the personnel that we're preparing for next year, the master scheduling for planning for not only summer school, but also fall and anticipating what our outcap plan is going to look like next year and alignment of our several plans that Mr. Cecil just mentioned, one today, and we also heard about the ELO program earlier too. So March is the longest month and one of the busiest months at Almonte Union High School District. Not only that, but the standardized assessments, the state assessments that our kids are in the middle of or have started back in February or are now concluding closely to their last standardized assessment. That includes, you know, obviously your S pack, ALPAC, et cetera. So that's a big item there. But you know, the main theme that we've had all year was the actual COVID reports that I provided to you. And I'm moving away from that, but I'm keeping it close by as well because I think it's just kind of an important factor in this school year. So the changes to state and county guidelines for COVID-19, we addressed them, we recognized them, we spoke to students, to staff, to our parents and super PAC about their feelings about what's happening, not only in our local community, but across the country in our state as we saw the surge come and go. And luckily for us that we continue to see that progress in the decline in hospitalizations across the county, which is a great sign, even though there's another variance around the corner that we're seeing in Europe and even now into this nation too, that we got to keep a close eye on. Talked about the assessments, our annual parent academy was success, the highest attendance for Almonte Union High School District on a year that we returned back onto campus. So, you know, it's putting our money where our mouth is and ensuring that the entire school community is engaged even during the pandemic year. And our parents showed up, they represented Almonte Union High School District, they made us proud. And we actually are excited to see the amount of turnout overall. We're already looking for next year as well. Our goal is to not only do this one annually, but do a district one in the fall. So all of our district may maybe like a mini parent academy, all of our high school parents come together in one location outside the district, similar to this academy. And that would be in the winter. Youth Truth Survey results are here. The school's administration has received them and also are carefully looking at them along with their staff. We will be looking in the next couple of weeks in our next meeting, spending some time with their student advisory council, looking at those results and hoping to prepare a presentation to you in May. So challenge the kids if we can do that. We got a lot of work ahead. If you break that down, if that's can be made possible, we'll do that. Otherwise, it'll be at a later time. The construction projects, you saw that we had our groundbreaking at South Almonte High School for the quad renovation program, exciting for that school. And I think our parents saw some pictures of the show of what to expect at the open houses too. So we're looking forward to the ongoing construction work that not only South Almonte, but the planning and current construction is happening now. The development of master schedules, as I mentioned, between the tandem work of Mr. Cecil and Mr. Torres and working alongside the principals and the school administration along with Mr. Steelman with the new SIS system and putting all this work together on a new system has been very challenging, has not been easy whatsoever. But I'm pleased to see that we're reading the same synergy language at this time, little by little. I probably know the least because these guys are becoming the experts while I'm doing the other work. So I'm relying heavily on them to enter the fall with a full system ahead with our new SIS system. So we'll continue to work on it. And then last, our open houses. We already went through probably three open houses and now we're going to finish those in the next couple of weeks with starting with them. We're back again, added in later on this week, I believe. And then we'll finish off. So congratulations to those who already did their open houses and really showing what the district is that we know that it's been difficult, but we want parents on campus. We want students on campus, meeting their teachers and their parents together and reuniting families after a year being out of open houses too. And then just a little roadmap about, you know, let me see if I missed it here. No, this is a, this is regarding about monitoring COVID-19. One slide here. I say hope is not a strategy because I love that phrase that you can't wish that kids are going to go into AP classes and see, you know, and see that overnight. No, it's not a strategy. And we've been talking about equity. We've been talking about in your face. We've been talking about looking at the outcome of our products of our accdeca students, our, our students who place at the state for wrestling, and even our fellow this evening, looking at that. It's not hope. It's really by bringing attention to the things that we as a community continue to strive for. So the opportunity here for monitoring COVID-19, we may be a little quiet about what's happening right now, but I'm certain there's things around the corner that we got to be prepared for, right? So the changes to the indoor requirements that we did, we, I see this as a reward. We rewarded our community for making, they're doing their job and increasing the vaccination rates. And we held a meeting with some of our health partners and we reported that we are over 93% in-person instruction students vaccinated. And they have not heard such a thing for a school district for that high percentage of students. And we explained how we transitioned slowly from the state, county into our own timeline of April, April 4th for the strongly recommend, recommended mask indoor option. And I also told my association partners that we will continue to do our screenings until, you know, at least through spring break and then we will revisit that one again as well. But it doesn't mean that just as we change the, the mandate to in-person for the mask, if there's a surge that's coming and we're looking at that data, we could revert back to it soon, even before the end of the school year. But that's all reliant on the surge due to the VA two. I'm sure you've heard that, that's a variant that we've seen across Europe and also growing gradually throughout the states here in the US. We've also paid attention to the testing that we see weekly through full gent. And as I mentioned in my memo, that we haven't seen a positive test in quite some time. But this week we'll be telling because some families are on spring break. Some people are, you know, it's getting warm. People are out there too. The mask mandate for strongly optional is, it started. So we've seen that three, four week trend already with folks that are not wearing masks indoors too. And we're going to take a look at that data about our own outcome for testing still as far as that transmission rates here. And then the actual preparation for return from spring break, we will be distributing at home test kits to every single student and every single staff member to test before they return back to campus prior to April 25th, that is Monday. That'll be a requirement for our students. They will be provided to test and we will encourage them to test twice, one on Monday and then the other one, if they wish to, they can continue to test because we know that when you deal with COVID, it could happen at any time. We have a long week, eight days out, including that Friday before the Good Friday. So we will be accepting a pass that they self-reported on Sunday night and then coming back on Monday through the screening process of confirming that they submitted their results. And we saw the results already through our own system. Those who show up because perhaps they forgot or they did not realize that the, you know, that the kids were for that purpose, those will be intercepted before they enter school. We will provide them with a test kit. They will test onsite. They will be returned back to campus and then we will monitor their results and then go from there. But we will provide them that opportunity when they get back onto campus too. We're going to strongly encourage all of our staff members to test before. And we had a pretty positive result the first time we did it in February with our holidays in February. And we have informed the union partners that we want their support and making sure that they advocate for, they do their part as well that we get tested before we come back onto campus too. Okay? And then finally, our stakeholder communication, which is very critical to our parents, making sure they're aware as well and ensure that the instructions are provided about how to conduct that test at home. It's, it's no, nothing new to us. We ran those in February. So we're hopeful that kids remember with the simple, simplified form of QR code and reporting their actual results. And then finally, the roadmap to end of 2021 school year. These are key periods of time for the spring semester. We just finished our FAFSA. It was extended through April 1st. There was a strong push at the end from all of our college and career offices to our counselors, through the word of mouth, getting our parents onto campus, attending their workshop. So we were happy that the state granted the extension to April 1st to get more kids to complete their FAFSA. The second period of the spring semester ends on Friday. So that means we have one more grading period before the end of the school year, one more final push. As we continue on, spring break falls after starting next Friday. As I mentioned, it's a student teacher free day. The official start date is April 18th on Monday. And then we, we get into May, May is the continuous of assessments and that is a big, a big date, dates for the AP students as they begin the process on May 2nd for the exams. And that's when the window begins. As you know that they come in days, right? You have a few, a couple for that first week, that second week, you have a few more. I believe the first one on May 2nd, we hit the ground running with two of our AP courses offered in our district. The class of 2020 graduates on June 2nd. We will send Zilali and her peers farewell and wish them the best, but continue to guide them, support them, love them, and see how proud they're going to make us feel over the next couple of years when they mature off and into their college or career settings.
Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, very quickly, for the AP exams, are they going to be in person this year or virtual?
I believe they're in person from my understanding. But there is an option for virtual, I also heard as well.
Thank you.
Right, that's my understanding. For summer school, we began, well, we take one week off and it will start summer school on the 13th. As I mentioned to you, we're preparing for a three-period course, course offering throughout the day. And that is as a response to our Esper funding, who provides our schools and our students enrichment classes, additional time on campus, whether it's to make up classes to catch up or to get ahead as well. So we're very grateful that we can continue doing that this year again. And then finally, the adoption of 23, 24 budget and also the adoption of the LCAP plan. I believe this is year two of the 21, 24 LCAP plan that we'll be bringing to the board on June 22nd, capping really the final before we hit July and go hopefully dark, get some rest. But we got a lot of work ahead and it's just a busy time of the year for all of our students and all of our families, our principals and schools. So I want to thank our staff here at the district office, our cabinet team for continuing leading, you know, leading the charge and making sure that our schools are supported for graduation and everything else. So that is my report for today, my update for the board, President Salsedo.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga.
And ready, set, spring break.
All right. Okay, now we move on to number three, which is board of trustees' assignment for 2022 commencement ceremonies. So we have there our, our assignments. Are there any questions? Comments? No? Dr. Zuniga or Ligo, do we go through all of these or are there any comments or any public hearings? Are they public hearings or?
No, sir, but we should recognize there are public hearings for each one of them.
Right. So we just read through all of them?
Yeah, we would like to do that and making sure that we cover the public hearing and close it.
The number four is a public hearing notice, initial proposal from EMUEA to EMUHSD, EMUHSD to EMUEA, EMUEA adult ed to EMUHSD, EMUHSD to EMUEA adult ed, EMUHSD to CSCA for the 2022, 2023 school year. Any public hearings?
And there is no public comment for this item here, sir. So we can close the hearing.
Okay. The number five is initial proposal from, of the Almonte Union Educators Association to the Almonte Union High School District for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Once again, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Number six is the initial proposal of the Almonte Union High School District to the Almonte Union Educators Association for the 2022, 2023 school year.
No public comment for this item.
Number six is the initial proposal of the Almonte Union High School District. Did I just read that one?
Yeah.
Put my glasses on.
A doll education.
Number seven, the initial proposal of the Almonte Union Educators Association Adult Ed to the Almonte Union High School District for the 2022, 2023 school year.
No public comment on this one.
Okay. Number eight is the initial proposal of the Almonte Union High School District to the Almonte Union Educators Association Adult Ed for the 2022, 2023 school year.
And no public comment for this one, sir.
Okay. Number nine is the initial proposal of the Almonte Union High School District to Classified School Employees Association and it's Almonte Union High School District Chapter number 11 for the 2022, 2023 school year.
No public comment.
Thank you. We will now move on to consent agenda.
President Salsedo, if I may, our, our student trustee will be exiting at 9:30. She does have two preferential voting items that she wishes to share on the regular agenda if you allow her to make those recommendations now.
Sure, we can do that now. We can move forward to number 12, correct?
Thank you. As part of the Roseme disaster preparedness team and a Red Cross cabinet member, I've seen firsthand the necessity for safety preparedness. Most importantly, here in Southern California, the preparedness for wildfires and earthquakes. With climate change, there has been an increased scene in deadly wildfires. In 2021, there were 8,619 wildfires in California. As it begins to get hotter, I think there has to be a definite emphasis on fire safety on our campuses as well as earthquake safety, especially given the fact that we are on top of the San Andreas Fault. As a district, the safety of our students and staff has always been top priority. And the decision to provide staff with safety training can ensure that we continue to create a safe educational environment for everyone on our campus. That is why I feel that the board should vote in favor of regular item number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And number 14?
Yes, thank you. Census data showcased that voter turnout was highest amongst ages 65 to 74 at 76%, while the percentage was the lowest among the 18 to 24 age range with a percentage of 51.4% at the last presidential election. Our students should be at the forefront of voting. Topics like climate change, reproductive rights, racial discrimination, and cancellation of student debt all directly impact my age group. There are topics that are being discussed and bills that are being built upon, which are to have a lasting impact on my generation and future generations to come. I think there has to be continuous emphasis on pre-registering to vote and actually going out to vote for our students. And I know that our students at the student advisory council are leading forces of organizing this at our own respective campus, campuses, and I'm happy to see how we move forward as a board. So I think that the board should vote in favor of that. So I think that the board should vote in favor of that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palacios. Do we still take those during the regular agenda, right? So we continue with consent right now? Okay, we move to the consent agenda. Are there any questions, Mr. Torres Segurst?
Yes, I have a question.
What numbers?
Number two.
Any others?
Yes, number nine and number 19.
Okay. Mr. Diaz, any questions?
No.
Mr. Bionis?
I would just like to pull item seven so I can vote separately on that item.
Okay. Mr. Padilla?
Just a comment before Ms. Zilali Palacios leaves. I know it's late and it's 9:30. I just want you to know that later on, when I do my board communications at the end, I just want you to know that I attended NSBA, and the whole time I was there, I had your paper with me. You were in my head the entire time, and I made it my focus to attend all sessions on equity and access and having these discussions with people all over the country and asking them, you know, how do you do business in your district and how do you address these issues of equity and access? So before you leave, I want you to know that this paper that you brought forward is involving everything that I'm doing now, even with all my colleagues. I've been sharing it, and I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Okay? That's it, Mr. President. I just wanted to leave.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay. So let's go to number two. And you had a question, Mr. Torres Segurst, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. I have a moment. I have a question. And they know who they see. I don't know. They need high school education and northern construction services for the DSA. For the Rosmeat Icefield and Field, concession will be required. I can hear lots of positive comments about the Rosmeat. We can, we can, we will very proud of that. All the things that I can do. I know what I want to say.
Number nine?
Number nine is the one that is, consider that you are a volunteer, is visiting art school, apply to provide professional leadership and training in CPA film or CPA, sorry.
Yes, oh, thank you. Number nine, CPA film, film video production at Mountain View High School, Mountain View High School. Okay, can we arrange to have a brief showing at a board meeting of a video that has been produced? I think it could be a very good idea if we can have that.
Absolutely.
Yes?
Yeah. One of the, if you recall, when we did the-
We did the burger one.
Impossible Burger, the Impossible Burger video that you saw, that was an example of what the kids do and the mentoring that they receive, the skills that they require when they make that video. That's one of the actual examples, but we're happy to provide your share with you on Friday memo as well.
Yeah, that would be really a good idea, okay?
That would be great.
Thank you very much. And the last one is number 19. Consider approval resolution number 41 hyphen 21 slash 22, reconsidering the state of emergency and reauthorization Board of Trustees' meeting to be conducted by teleconference pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Many members of the public have expressed that their gratitude for this service and requests that we continue having it. Is it possible to keep having this service?
For the, the virtual?
Yes.
Yeah, we currently, we currently are continuing to do that right now.
And we are going to keep on doing this.
As far as the board gives direction, we continue to do the actual screening, screen, that streaming of the, the actual board meetings at this point till the end of the year. The board wishes to revisit that.
It's happening right now, right?
Yeah, right now it's on.
Yeah, the people, a lot of people, they comment to me and they said it is really great for the first time they attending the board meetings and learning. This is a good training for our public, okay? Thank you. That's it. Mr. President, those are the ones that I wanted to talk about.
So we're gonna vote on the consent agenda. We're gonna pull number seven, so we're voting on one through 22 with the exception of seven, and then we'll take up number seven. So can I have a motion?
Move to approve items one through 22 with the exception of item number seven.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number seven, let me just read the title real quick. This is Consider Approval of Affiliation Agreement Between the Almani Union High School District and Biola University to Provide Intern Opportunities. So I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, 4-1-0. Okay, now we move to the regular agenda. And the first one that we have tonight is Consider Approval to Award in Agreement Bid Number 2021-22B7 for Network Enclosure Replacement Project to Avidex Industries.
Move to approve.
Second. Any comments or questions? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number two, Consider Approval to Award in Agreement Bid Number 2021-22B8 for Security Camera Installation Project to TechNet Partners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just a comment. I thought we were all done doing cameras and, I mean, why are we awarding another contract? I thought we were all done with that. You want to respond?
Sure. Now, we, we, we did some cameras, but we still have a significant number of cameras that need to be installed, so this is, this will be, will be the second.
So this is another contract for another company or the same company?
No, it's a different company. This is a public bid, and we have, I believe, how many cameras, mister?
Yeah, this is the second phase of the installation of cameras. We went through the first phase probably a few years back, but our goal was to provide most of the issue, most of the cameras are initially initiated first were outdoors, outside the areas of the campuses. This is going to be more specific to indoor, more of the hallways, the freeways, the staircases, just to focus more on the indoor.
Okay, so on the outdoors, we're like 100% finished with outdoors?
Yeah, so this is the second of three phases, as Dr. Zuniga said. So the first phase was to get all of the quads, all of the external.
Right.
The second phase is to get all of the internal walkways, stairwells, gymnasiums, and then to point towards bathrooms. We've had a lot of vandalism going on in the bathrooms, so just to basically catch who's coming and going from those particular areas.
Got it, just for the purpose of time.
And the third phase is more, I'm sorry.
Got it, just for the perfect of time. I just, it answered my question. Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hold on there, Mr. Stillman.
Sure.
Because now it opens it up.
Yeah.
So any issues, I mean, third issuance, any issues with compatibility with the other cameras? They're still able to run the same software platform?
It's the same exact provider. We used a different camera. It's now been purchased by Panasonic. We're now getting higher definition cameras from Panasonic so we can zoom in a little bit more, see more visual faces, which leads to us to be able to kind of do basically searches by facial recognition, which is pretty exciting for us. We've never had that capability. So it's all part of the same system on the backend and, yeah, once again, higher quality.
Right on. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, so moved. Number three is Consider Approval to Enter Into an Agreement with Ledesma and Meyer Construction Company in Response to RFP Number 2021-2022P17, Construction Management Services for the Royal High School and Mountain View High School Track and Field Projects.
Move to approve. Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number four, Consider Approval to Enter Into an Agreement with Anaheim Group Incorporated in Response to RFP Number 2021-2022P18 to Provide Division of State Architecture and DSA Inspector of Records Services for the Mountain View School Cafeterium and Zooku Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number five, Consider Approval to Enter Into Agreement with Curry Engineering and Testing in Response to RFP Number 2021-2022P19 to Provide Material Testing and Special Inspection Services for the Mountain View High School Cafeterium and Zooku Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number six, Consider Approval of Lease Agreement Between EMUHSD and Casa Colina Hospital and Centers for Healthcare at the District Premises Located at 678 West Arrow Highway, San Dimas, California 91773.
Move to approve. Second.
Any comments, questions?
Good job, Mr. Altar.
Oh, good job. Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number seven, Consider Approval of Five-Year Technology Contract with NIC Partners for Cybersecurity Software Application Ransom Care.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider Approval Contract Agreement Between EMUHSD and Cortica Behavioral Health to Provide Support Services to Disabled Students with Exceptional Needs for the 2021-2022 School Year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number nine, Consider Approval of Agreement Between EMUHSD and Hacienda La Puente School District to Provide Clinical Experience Opportunities for Students of Vocational Educational Programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
We're providing the facility for them to do their clinical experience, and if we are, where is that going to be?
This is a dual agreement between the two school districts to receive the services from allied health centers.
Yeah.
We're partnering together.
Got it. That wasn't clear for me on that little verbiage that was there. It sounded like we're providing the spots for La Puente Adult School. Got it, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 10, Consider Approval of Independent Contractor Agreement Between EMUHSD and Agnisa Papazian Psych to Provide Independent Psychological, Psychoeducational Evaluations for Special Ed Students.
Move to approve.
Second. Any questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 11, Consider Approval of Independent Contractor Agreement Between EMUHSD and Eileen Villarreal Associate Marriage and Family Therapist.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Comment, is this, is this a contract that we are providing for special ed or is this a contract to fulfill another position in our wellness centers?
It completes our wellness centers.
It's completed. Thank you.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Hearing none, so moved. Number 12, Consider Approval of Service Agreement Between EMUHSD and Disaster Survival Skills to Provide School Safety Training for the 2021-2022 School Year.
Move to approve. Second.
Quick question, did this already happen?
No, it hasn't.
When is it gonna happen?
After, they're gonna start putting the date together after this meeting. They'll plan it with them before the end of the school year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because the school year is ending.
Yeah.
As a result of reviewing the school safety plans, the safety team requested and recommended this. We are piloting this program for future use of other schools, too. And this was a request made by the Mountain View High School Safety Team, so we're gonna take a look at it, and then they'll hopefully get the training done before the end of this fiscal year and then analyze it to see if there's something we want to do for all the schools.
Okay. And this is something that you're looking at for fire and earthquake, or what does disaster include?
This is, he, he did this same type of program for us about seven, eight years ago. He came and analyzed our bins and he worked with the, the, more of the triage group at the schools when they do their, you know, going to rooms, how to go in the rooms, how to do triage, what to look for in the rooms. So we're gonna pilot this and see what it's like, and then we can roll out to the other schools.
Yeah. It should be fairly easy because remember a while back, we requested inventory of what was in those C-trains, and we spent, you know, thousands, thousands of dollars of making sure that we had, that we were well stocked because we knew we were gonna have to take care of our students as well as the community that comes onto our campus during a disaster. So that, that should be, it's something that we've always paid a lot of attention to, so it should be fairly easy.
And he did that about seven years ago, eight years ago.
Yeah, I believe this gentleman's a former firefighter.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I know the Almani City School District has used him several times before, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a first and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, hearing none, so moved. Thirteen, Consider Approval of, for the EMUHSD to Join in Membership with the California Coalition of High Schools for the 2021-2022 School Year.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 14, Consider Approval Resolution Number 42-21/22 for EMUHSD Support of Voter Education Weeks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 15, Consider Approval Resolution Number 43-.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Number 15's been pulled.
Yeah, 15, yeah, I see mostly.
Until, well, we'll talk about that later.
17, 18.
Thank you for that. Number 16, Consider Approval Resolution Number 44-21/22, Approving Absent Support Member from Previous Board of Trustees' Meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain, of course. So anybody against, anybody? No? 401, thank you. Number 17, Consider Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between the Almani Union Education Association and the Almani Union High School District to Increase the Contracted Days and Base Salary for 2022-2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number 18, Consider Approval Memorandum of Understanding to the Almani Union Education Association and the Almani Union High School District to Provide Additional Compensation for Period Substitution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. And number 19 is Review, Discuss, and Revise Administrative Regulations and Board Policies in the 5,000 Series First Reading. Any questions or comments from board members?
None for me.
No? Okay. Number 20, Review, Discuss, and Revise Board Bylaws 9322, Agenda Meeting Materials First Reading. Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
None.
No? We're okay. All right, so that concludes the regular agenda. We move to, uh, Board Communication Roundtable. Uh, topics to be discussed or future, uh, agenda items, Mr. Padilla?
Yes, um, I attended open house. I wanted to thank Rosemead High School, South Del Monte High School, and Arroyo High School. Truly enjoyed, uh, attending open house in person. It was awesome. I could tell that the parents enjoyed it, uh, the board enjoyed it, and, uh, it was very refreshing to see, uh, the campuses and be, uh, be there. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend the NSBA, uh, the National School Board Association Conference from April first up until the fourth. I'd like to thank, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, Dr. Zuniga, and especially, um, um, Alma for coordinating all of those registrations, all the hotels, all of the registrations to the conference, just everything. It was very smooth, uh, and, uh, I know that we're spoiled in the Almani Union High School District. When I talk to some of my other school board member friends, and I tell them, all that is done for us to make it a smooth conference, or any time that we travel, they're just in awe, and they're like, what? They give you a folder and everything's there? Everything from directions to, you know, how to get to the place, uh, just very smooth. So, Alma, thank you, thank you, thank you. I cannot say it enough. I wanted the public to know, uh, how professional you are, uh, for any conference or any time that we leave, uh, the city of Elmonte or Almani Union High School District, you always make it very smooth, so I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, cause you have to do it for all of us, but I wanna publicly acknowledge that. Um, as I told, uh, our school, uh, trustee, Sitlali, uh, when I attended the National School Board Association Conference, uh, it's national, it's different from our CSBA, which is our local chapter, um, I had Sitlali Palacios in mind the entire time. Most of the sessions that I attended, that I wanted to get, uh, developed in more in terms of, of, uh, professional development, uh, was all around the area of equity and access. Um, there are people there from North Carolina, New Mexico, Arizona, Oklahoma, all over. Uh, you know, a couple of them told me that, that I, that, that I talk funny, or that I speak funny, but I thought they spoke funny, but it just depends on who's on the receiving end. But it was really refreshing to hear that other people are doing the same work when it comes to equity and access, and I'll tell you, at times it can get very comfortable. I was in some sessions where you say the word equity, and people kind of, you could just feel the air get sucked out of the room, uh, because some people associate equity, and they wanna talk about critical race theory and topics that are very heated, but, uh, but it's okay, it's, it's important, uh, discussions that we must have. You know, sometimes our, our politicians at the, at the high level of the federal government can't sit down and have conversations with Democrats and Republicans, it's gotta start somewhere, and I think the place that starts is in, in, in the local, in the, uh, the local school boards, where we have these discussions, and even if they're uncomfortable, we have to talk about it. Uh, I saw tons of African-American people, tons of Caucasian people, tons of Latino people. I think I saw more Latino school board members, uh, at the NSBA than I actually saw at, than I actually get to see at CSBA. Uh, something funny that happened to me, I went to a session, and, uh, this Caucasian man and I were talking, and we were going down the escalator, and he's like, can I ask you a question? I'm like, yeah, sure, what's going on? She's like, where are all the Latinos at? And I'm like, excuse me? You mean like, where are all the Latinos, like, in Southern California for our school district? He's like, no, I mean, where are all the Latinos here? I mean, here I thought I had seen so many Latinos at the conference, but this Caucasian man tells me, like, where are all the Latinos? He's like, I go, well, we're, we're one of the largest ethnic minority groups in education, Latinos are. He says, yeah, but I don't see you guys here, like, there should be more of you here in, uh, as school board members. And I said, you know what? I agree. I said, we gotta get them elected. But I found that to be pretty, pretty funny. You know, I talk about race and ethnicity very openly, and, uh, I, I just thought it was funny. I was laughing down the escalator that he wanted to know where were all the Latinos, and, uh, made me laugh. Uh, I'm also proud to announce that I did get interviewed by NSBA, they, they did a small video, and they wanted to know, you know, what my thoughts or what my feelings were about equity, or what equity means to me. And basically, what I said is that, you know, we must include student voice, we must include our students, cause I was thinking of Sitlali, and that sometimes it's gonna be uncomfortable, but you must include teachers, administrators, principals, board members, and you gotta have these compelling conversations. And as, as we kept talking, and, and Sitlali was saying, you know, Mr. Cecil, I will be back, you know, I will come back to find out about this. Basically, she's talking about accountability, and she's talking about where does the data take us, you know, and those of us that have been in education know that we hear statements or quotes like, data's not good, data's not bad, data is what it is. We're not attacking teachers, we're not attacking principals, we're not attacking the board, we're not attacking assistant supes, but the data will tell us a story of, you know, that will be in our face. I can tell you from attending the NSBA Conference, we're on the right track. Sitlali got us on the right track to have these conversations, but not just have these conversations, and then they go away, uh, or, or to do the, um, use truth, use truth, you know, will tell us and give us data, but then what are we gonna do with that data? And I like it when Dr. Zuniga said that we're gonna, uh, you know, convene a, a committee to have these discussions, because again, data's not good, data's not bad, but we gotta talk about this if we truly wanna, uh, you know, put our money where our mouth is, is, or give, uh, power to equity and access. Um, in terms of, uh, uh, equity and access, one of the areas that we're beginning to have a discussion about this is in AP classes. Also, listening to you, Mr. Cecil, talk about A through G, you know, there's a lot of components here that can go into our discussion, which is the, the percentage of students that are completing A through G requirements, and the percentage of those students that are not. Also, when we talk about clean mobility mentorship, who created the access for this young lady to come and present on clean energy and, and access? We did. So, the more we talk about it, the more will be in our face, the more, uh, the more we will create those conditions to provide those, uh, uh, opportunities for young people in our school district. Um, in addition to that, uh, I wanna make a comment, and this is about ethnic studies. We're on the right track with ethnic studies, uh, but I did have a question when I went to Rosemead High School, my alma mater, also Sitlali's, uh, place of, uh, attendance for her school. One of the teachers, when I was visiting classrooms, asked me this question, and I was a little bit perplexed by it, I, I, and we had a good discussion, but I was very direct about my answer, and she says, you know, um, what was the board's objective with, like, uh, putting, uh, ethnic studies on the master schedule? Like, what was the board's objective? And I was very direct with this teacher, and I said, let me tell you the main objective. I said, the main objective of this class is so that when there's more kids that go to college, like Mr. Padilla, that they don't feel awkward, or that they feel the imposter syndrome. I said, do you know about the imposter syndrome? I go, let me tell you a little bit about it, cause I experienced it, and, you know, now that I'm a school board member, and I have, uh, uh, the power, the ability to influence policy, I, I want kids to have these discussions so that they feel prepared about who they are, about who they're interacting with, to feel comfortable about the other people in the class and learning about other cultures, cause I don't want students to feel like Mr. Padilla felt when he went to, uh, university. So, I thought it was an interesting question that she asked of what was the board's objective? I think that's the board's objective, is that we prepare our students to go on to four-year universities, or higher, uh, higher education, and not have students feel the imposter syndrome. So, if that teacher's watching, and I wasn't, you know, clear about my response, that is my response, and if there's a board member who would like to correct me or add more to that, but for me, that was the objective, and, and, and I've always said this, and I told Mr. Cecil, you know, uh, you know, the board was crystal clear about what we wanted, and you followed our marching orders, and I remember that we got up, some pushback from some teachers, because they wanted, you know, they felt that they were, that we were not ready, and the board was still very forceful and said, start it, start it now. We don't have time to waste, because these kids, once they graduate, they're gonna leave, and they're never gonna take advantage of ethnic studies. So, uh, I like what I heard the last time when I had the presenters come here, uh, some of them were very, uh, transparent in saying that, wow, we were kinda hesitant about, you know, offering this class to freshmen, because we didn't really think that they had anything to contribute, and it was in their face that freshmen have a lot to contribute, and so I was glad to hear that we're offering it for those students. So, uh, thank you for continuing to have these discussions around equity and access, uh, Dr. Edward Zuniga, as well as my colleagues on the board. Um, and then I wanna give kudos, kudos to Dr. Edward Zuniga, you know, I, I, I sat next to you now, and every time I sit next to you, I just see that your hair is getting, getting grayer and grayer and grayer, so we're working your tail off, and, uh, you know, but I just wanna say thank you, thank you. I like to give credit where credit is due, and, and I'm not saying it, I'm not trying to be funny, like, I look at him, and I'm like, oh my God, like, he's, we, we're, we're aging Dr. Zuniga, he still looks very young, but, uh, I'm like, man, we're, you know, we're, yeah, you're still smiling, so I wanna give kudos there. Kudos to Larry Cecil, uh, our Assistant Supervet Services, thank you, thank you for putting up with me, thank you for working with all my colleagues, and always coming, uh, prepared, well, except for today, you weren't prepared, but, no, just kidding. I know you know that stuff backwards and forward, and I thank you for that, uh, you know, I, I've watched you too, you know, you have a lot on your plate, curriculum on instruction, and juggling all these things, and planning for summer school, and planning the master schedule for next year, and Sitlali and I on the board coming after you about these discussions about equity and access, there's a lot on your plate, so I just wanna say thank you. I do appreciate you, and I know I tell you off the dais, but I wanna tell you while I'm on the dais, so that it goes on record, that I do appreciate you. Also, to Mr. Whale Altar, thank you for always being so conservative and taking care of our money, uh, I'm glad that we have a very healthy reserve, and that we're a very, uh, you know, conservative school district in the San Gabriel Valley, but yet our students do not go without. We provide for them in every way, uh, that we can. And also to Mr. Robin Torres, I know you've worked your tail off, you know, we're still not over COVID, it's gotten better, but we still have to have our guard up. I know that you have worked so hard, so, so, so hard of all these tests, all these companies, everything that you've done, I wanna publicly acknowledge the work that you've done, I think you're all a great team, and, I mean, it's a whole district, and it's a very few of you that are assistant supes, but at the end of the day, it, it falls on you guys and, and, and on the school board. So, public thank yous to you guys, and, uh, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, um, I put on here, uh, thank you to my colleagues, I put Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. You know, we don't always agree, okay, there's some stuff that gets very heated, and we can get very vicious, we don't always agree on everything, but one thing that we do agree on is our philosophy of education for our students. You know, we advocate for those English language learners, those students on free and reduced lunch, foster youth and homeless, you know, housing insecurities, food insecurities, making sure that our kids have a fighting chance to be able to compete, uh, in the, in, in our world, in our school district, and as they move on to become productive citizens of, of Almonte and, and of our nation. And for that, I do thank all my colleagues, and have a nice spring break. It came super late, I'm worn out in my day job, uh, uh, I, I, I can't wait for spring break, so happy spring break, okay? Take some time off and, uh, disconnect from school stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Breones?
Thank you. President Salsedo, uh, just a couple items from me. Uh, first, I wanted to share with everybody that, um, we at the Almani Women's Club will be, uh, having student interviews for our scholarship this year. We didn't get to do it last year, um, obviously because of COVID, and, uh, earlier last month, we had our first in-person meeting since COVID, and so, um, I met with President Gina Morales, and she has, uh, has conferred upon me the title of Chair of the Scholarship Committee, um, so I will be reaching out to our, um, career and college coordinators, uh, excuse me, career and college center coordinators, uh, as well as the adult school, to get the applications out to students, make sure that they know that the, uh, scholarships, uh, are available, and then schedule interviews. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I've participated in that interview process for several years, and I truly enjoy it, and, uh, uh, did genuinely miss it last year, uh, so I'm looking forward to restarting that process again. Um, next item is, as Mr. Padilla mentioned, you know, I also attended National School Board Association Conference, uh, this past weekend. My main takeaway from the conference is, uh, from everybody that I spoke to, presenters, and just folks that I ran into, um, our number one priority is our students, and should always be our students, that is our focus. Um, and so that was a, a theme that was expressed throughout many, if not all of the presentations and sessions that I attended. Um, one session that I attended that really stuck, uh, stuck out to me was, uh, a presentation or session called, um, Build a Blueprint for Linking Student Voice to Policy and Practice, uh, and it was presented by two trustees from the Tygar-Tualatin School District, uh, near Portland, Oregon, and, um, a lot of what they discussed are things that we're already doing here, in particular, by having a sitting student trustee member on our board. Um, it came as a big surprise to, to me and some others, that a lot of school districts don't have student trustees. Um, and for that matter, a lot of the student trustees just provide updates, but don't, uh, don't engage in discussion, uh, whether by design, or because they're not told that they're, that they can, um, and also, a lot of them don't, don't know, or aren't allowed to, to have preferential voting. So, that was, uh, something that, that made me happy to know that we were already doing that. Um, but there were a couple other things that, uh, that I brought back with me, that I'll wanna discuss with Dr. Zuniga, um, about how we incorporate the student voice into the policies that we, that we enact. Uh, I think that conversation's already started with, uh, the article that our student trustee member, Ms. Palacios, shared with us last board meeting, um, and I think, uh, it's an opportunity for us to not only reflect on, again, our number one priority, which is our students, but also see how we can further improve their experience, our student experiences within the schools, and how their needs dictate our policy decisions here on the, on the dais. Um, so it was a really great conference, and, and I wanna echo what Mr. Padilla said, I truly felt that, uh, NSBA was, it seemed to be much more reflective of people of color than CSBA's, uh, AEC usually is, uh, so it's interesting to hear that at least one individual was asking where, where are the Latinos? Because everywhere you went, you know, there's a lot more people of color, because this was a nationwide conference, so you had people from across all fifty states. Um, many more of the presenters at NSBA, uh, were people of color, either, uh, Latinos or African-Americans or API, uh, so I'm, you know, I'm kinda curious what sessions that individual went and attended, um, and who he had dinner with, because I had the opportunity to have dinner with some folks from, uh, Santa Fe, New Mexico, that I had met, um, at the Equity Symposium in DC back in January, uh, and we met up again, and, uh, you know, they're, you know, they run the gamut there, it's, it's the Rainbow Coalition on, uh, that school district. Really great people, and shout out to, to Stephanie Thompson, who's a trustee there at Farmington School District in New Mexico. Uh, so it was a great conference, um, definitely a different perspective than CSBA, because it's, it's nationwide, it's not just California, so it really gives us a, an opportunity to see what other schools are doing outside of, you know, the Golden State. Um, I had the opportunity to attend South Almani's Open House, and I wanna give a special thanks to Mrs. Olga Lopez for, uh, giving me a tour of the wellness center there, uh, it was great to see that space, and I, I'm happy to see that we approved, uh, additional contract today, so we could complete our wellness centers across our district, um, and I was really happy to see the improvements that have been done in the classrooms, as well as in the administration building, uh, having worked in that, in that office for many, many years, uh, you never see how, how dated some environments are until you step away and then come back and see that it, it's a much nicer space, um, and I think it's very deserving of the campus. And I did have an opportunity to have a very lengthy discussion with a, a biology teacher, Mr. Otten, uh, there at South Almani, really great individual, he's been with our district now for, I believe, three years, um, and we had a very nice substantive discussion about what it is like to be teaching during COVID back in person, the experience that he has had, both through virtual distance, distance learning, as well as in-person learning, and how his students are, are responding, um, and really acclimating being back on campus. I wanna give him, uh, a special thank you for taking the time to, to speak with me. Um, the other two items that I have, um, are two events that I received invitations to, one I, I sent the information over to Dr. Zuniga. On April twenty-ninth, Pasadena City College will have a groundbreaking ceremony for the new Armin Sarafian, um, Student Sciences Building, which, uh, is re- replacing the old LL Building, which was, uh, demolished recently, and so I wanted to ask my colleagues if we would be okay presenting a certificate to Pasadena City College for that event.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the next, uh, event is on April twenty-second, Fulgent Genetics, which is a contractor that we've used extensively here in our school district, uh, has recently moved into the city of Almani and opened up offices on Santa Anita, uh, just next to the San Gabriel Valley Airport, and so they will be ha- be having a, um, grand opening celebration, a ribbon cutting for their offices, their corporate offices there, and so I, again, I wanted to ask if we would be okay with providing a certificate, a recognition to Fulgent.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Okay. That's the twenty-second.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday. Yeah, 29th is PCC, 22nd is, um, Fulgent.
If you could just put that on our, um, memo to remind us for anybody who wants to attend.
And, uh, that's it for me, Mr. President, thank you.
I have a quick question for Mr. Briones before we, we, we leave Mr. Briones. I know that you're, you do a lot of, you're involved with CSBA or, or Mr. Diaz more so than I am. I, I received an email, and I think the rest of you did too, that, uh, CSBA does not want, is making a recommendation not to renew our, uh, membership with NSBA. And I was troubled with that for the same reason that you're saying, that I really enjoyed NSBA. I thought it was very professional, I thought that the presenters were very, you know, multicultural, more in tune with what our, the United States is, the society is, that the multiculturalism in America or in California. But do you guys know why they're recommending not to? All I heard was like, oh, they don't have our values and that there's 11 other states that are also following suit. But I, I, I was perfectly fine with them, but can you guys shed light on that? Or Mr. President, or anybody? I was troubled by that.
Matter of fact, Dr. Zuniga, we had that discussion today, we're like, what's going on?
It was high quality and to me, I, I felt that they were more, uh, what's the word? Align to what the real world is than when I go to CSBA. Like, in CSBA, I have felt, and you've heard me say some stuff about CSBA where I just kind of tell it like it is. And I remember, you remember my comments, I'm like, who died and made them kings? And that's kind of how I felt like right now, like, I truly enjoyed NSBA. I, I thought it was of high caliber. It's probably in my 10 years that I've been there, I've never been, this ranks up there with number one for me. So, if anybody can give me an answer to my question or if somebody could research it, uh, I, I really want to know, what, what do they mean by they don't have our values or whatever? Like, i- i- it's.
Dr. Zuniga was going to look into it, uh, when he and I talked earlier today. But I got a feeling there's much more behind it and I'm sure more is going to come out.
Okay.
I, I can jump in a little bit.
Sure.
So, at the delegate assembly back in December of last year before AEC, um, we did have a, a conversation about this and ultimately the delegate assembly did vote, um, to recommend pulling out of NSBA. Um, Dr. Susan Heredia, who's a president of the Board of Directors, did send out an email last, uh, last week on the 30th.
Yeah.
And so, from the conversations we had at delegate assembly and then what was shared with us, uh, recently, um, and in that email, it seems like these are structural problems that have existed for the better part of a decade. Um, obviously, I've only been on the delegate assembly for a year and we've only been trustees since, I mean, 2017 for myself.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure to what extent.
Okay.
Uh, but there are some concerns about how NSBA advocates, um, on behalf of the schools, uh, the school districts and, and the, the state associations. Uh, and frankly, that's why CSBA instituted the coast-to-coast advocacy trip in DC, which we're, we're going to be attending.
Yeah.
Uh, because they felt that it would be, that they would be, CSBA would be better suited to advocate for California's positions or needs better than NSBA has been doing. Um, I think there were also some issues regarding some business practices. I'm sure you're aware, uh, CSBA offers products that school district can, can buy. Um, and, uh, there's, uh, been, I think, some moves by NSBA to move into that same arena here in California without consideration for CSBA. Uh, but I'm happy, we have a Region 23 meeting, um, coming up later this month. I'll be happy to, to send the questions over. If you have more questions, please let me know and I can talk to our delegation and get back to everyone.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Thala Torres Segrist?
Yes, um, we assume, uh, I attend the Legislation Action Weekly that Senator Portatino had, was very, very, very interesting and especially when he recognized that, uh, El Monte Union High School District had representatives. It was Mr. Briones and myself who were there. Ninety percent of our students in, in the confirmation classes in Nativity Church are from El Monte Union High School District. And for that reason, um, I had to attend to a, a, a Congress for Religious Education. And the workshops that I talk, that I attend were very important and they were all, everything related to the students to keep studying and to become good citizens, to recognize this country. I, uh, I attend the PTA meeting where we were talking about the points that we have to try to, to talk about during the convention that we are going to have at the end of April, beginning of January, uh, be, the beginning of May. Um, also, I attend to the open house of our three high schools. I was, uh, very impressed with, uh, um, uh, with, uh, Rosemead High School when I was talking with the group that they had a club about who are the most, the very famous and important people, uh, from El Monte Union High School District and especially from Rosemead. But I was talking to them and I said, but we have other people in other, in other high schools. And they said, yeah, we had to promote our high school. And it was very interesting the way that these young kids were doing that. Also, I was talking for a while with the swimming instructor. It was very interesting. Let us know that it's very important that all the children, all the students need to learn how to swim because in the whole nation, California is the one that have more people who die uh, be, for not knowing how to swim. I was very impressed with that. And what about the music? The music was wonderful, the band was incredible, great. Uh, Arroyo High School impressed me in two clubs. One is, even if you don't believe, they have the club of crochet. I was so happy to see that because I never believed that here in the United States, in the high school, you were going to have a crochet club. It was in Mexico, that 50-year-old when I was in high school, that, but it was, it had a, a very important point to learn how to crochet. It concentrates your mind, moves your hands, and they create. And these kids were creating beautiful, don't think that they were crocheting dollies or, or, uh, handkerchiefs or, uh, gloves. No, no, there were a, a lot of beautiful, uh, figurines from Disneyland and it was very interesting. And the kids were, they were guiding that, that club, they said that they were very happy. A very important club that I was very impressed was with the speech and debate. And my big surprise was that the, the girl who is in charge of that, of that club is our delegate for Girl State. I think that this year, El Monte Union High School District is going to be a girl, is going to have a girl that is going to, to be nationwide, white. That girl speaks so clear. At the beginning, I didn't recognize her because, um, I don't get to get so close with the, with the girls who are going to participate in Girl State. It's totally forbidden because you can get in touch and you can be given some preference. The girls had to go directly with the, with the judges. That's the reason I didn't recognize her. The judges told me, that girl from Arroyo High School is great. And my surprise was that when I was in the open house, I met her and she said, "Don't you remember? Don't you remember me?" And I had to take off the mask and say, "Oh, Michelle, yes." I hope that we are going to have a girl's, national girl stay there because she talks and she speaks very, very, very well. I was very happy to be in South El Monte. For the first time, I decided to visit the Spanish classes. I visited three Spanish classes. They were very, the teachers were very good. They were speaking Spanish all the time with the parents and with the kids. But one of the classes impressed me a lot. That was the class from Mr. Ramon Lopez. He has in all his room the pictures of the 20 important writers, Hispanic writers. I, of course, there are 20 countries where we speak Spanish, 21 countries. The 21st, we don't have because Guinea-Equatorial doesn't have writers right now. But pretty soon, they are going to have it. But the most beautiful thing is the way that this teacher is putting the impression of important, not only of learning the language, learning also the culture. It was really a, a, a very wonderful time. I enjoy a lot being there. After two years, finally, in the women's club, we got together and we, we opened our, our, our women's club, um, saloon that we have. And unfortunately, that day, I couldn't stay longer because I had a meeting at PCC. But, uh, they gave me the, the, the resume, the, the, they gave me the, uh, all the, the minutes, what they talk about, what they were talking about. And Mr., um, uh, Mr. Briones is going to help us, is going to be in charge of give again scholarships to our students. It's not going to be as many as we used to do because I was in charge of the scholarship, uh, committee. But we are, we have enough money to at least give one scholarship to each one of our, of our high schools and the school, and, uh, also adult education. And I have to tell you that, um, I was very, very happy and very impressed this weekend when I attended NSBA. I was very happy, not only the work, the, as they call the sessions, the sessions were great. Um, we, I learned a lot in everything. And I think that we're not doing so bad, we're doing pretty good. The three general sessions were incredible, very impressive, talking about the importance of paying attention to our students. All the time was paying attention to the students, the first session. It was, the students are the most important, the second, the second session. The students, you have to help in everything. And the third session, the lady, uh, they said, I, I would like to see that, that videotape. It's the lady, uh, Amy, from Homeless to, um, to, um, the great university, what's the name, and then, that I always, uh, Harvard, yes, from Homeless. That's incredible, that's the best way of being example to the kids, never give up. As much as bad ha, bad life that you have, never give up. Oh, I really would like to get that, that documental and if we can show it to our students, it would be wonderful. Thank you very much for doing it in this way. And of course, you did a great job, Alma. You had everything prepared very well for us. Everything was smoothly and I enjoy a lot being there. Thank you very much. Mr. President, that's enough.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, President Salcedo. Um, for myself here, I'm happy to report that we were able to give the 25 bikes to the Mountain View High School youth, a little bit later than we anticipated, but, uh, we were able to get them the bikes. Uh, school site staff reported they were very happy and they posted about it on Instagram. We hope to give out, uh, at least 75 more out to the Almonte High School District. Uh, the other thing too for me is that, you know, I was really inspired by Brianna Emily and Mia Delgado today. And I know that Mr. Delgado mentioned that they have the Beat the Streets program over at Mountain View High School and South Almonte High School, but I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to expand to other school districts if they have the bandwidth or capacity potentially for Nada Ledezma, Almonte High School, Rosemead or Arroyo. So, at the board, in favor of that, maybe we can have a conversation with Beat the Streets leadership or something to see if we can expand, yeah, to the, to the other high schools. Yep. Um, and then the, the rest of them, well, one is, uh, with Measure W, there's a round four call for projects. I know that last time we submitted something under the Technical Resources Program for South Almonte High School, uh, but there is another call for projects that's due July 31st. So, I don't know, Mr. Alatar, there are potentially some other opportunities for other school sites that we could submit projects for, maybe implementation, not technical resources. So, I just wanted to flag that for you. Um, and then the other three things I was just curious about, Dr. Zuniga, um, the Metro Go Pass? Do, can we get an update on our board memo or?
Sure, yeah, the Metro Go Pass is a goal. The only thing we're waiting for is the, the language in the agreement.
Okay.
Um, so, we wanted to make sure that everything was aligned to what their agreement is, to what our agreement is. Uh, and our intention is to get it started as soon as possible. But, uh, looking at the fiscal year, we were looking at getting the agreement finalized, promoting it for July 1st and onward so that we could get a full fiscal year ahead. And that's kind of our timeframe that we decided to look at.
Awesome. When that happens, I just ask that, you know, we make sure that we highlight that and uplift it either through a press event, a press release or some type of event, you know? Because fellow transit.
Absolutely.
Students is really important.
Um, also, uh, Almonte, city of Almonte, uh, I requested the Metro reach out to the cities to see if we could also incorporate their trolley into the metro pass. And I believe that's going to happen, that that includes on there too.
That's a great idea.
So, I haven't heard anything else, but they had already reached out and they inquired what other, um, transportation means to our kids use as well, or our adult transition students or any other ones. So, I gave them a list of all the ones that we use, including Metro.
Now, if we could only get some signage for where the stops are, you know?
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, and then the, Mr. Padilla, do you, did you have a question or?
No, I just think, this reminds me of like when Mr. Salcedo, uh, you know, found out about, not a loophole, but remember when we got everybody on board to get free lunch? What was it, option, what was it, the option three or option two? This is what this reminds me of, you know, like an access for all type thing with transportation, just like we did with the meals. And yeah, we had to pick up, you know, the, the meal price for those students that, you know, weren't, didn't qualify based on your income and the definition that the federal government uses. But this reminds me of that, so, that, that is, that is great. You know, I think it was like three bucks, access, three bucks for the kids and what we get in return is just amazing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the, the other one is, uh, Rosemead High School ribbon cutting, like for the track and field. Is that still planned for next month or this month?
We're hoping that, yeah, at the end of April that we are finished up.
End of April.
I think you saw that extension for, uh, the issue with the snack bars. Uh, I believe the HEVAC system needs to be finalized and then also, once we get the green light.
Most likely in May then.
If we get it in May, that's probably our timeline. Anything else, Mr. Alatar, to add to that?
No, that's, that's about right.
We're thinking about after spring break, it should be wrapping up.
Okay, and then, uh, last thing here, PLA, we still haven't heard back from, from the folks over there?
No.
Okay.
They reached out to Trump.
All right, cool, well, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Awesome, let me just spell out. Well, first of all, um, just let me welcome Mr. Segrist, a board member from the Almonte City School District. And, um, you know, one thing that, uh, uh, Mrs. Torres de Segrist mentioned about the drownings, right? Especially here in California. I will, I will remind everybody that the Almonte City School District had a program pre-pandemic, of course, so, uh, the pandemic had a lot to do with that, uh, being on hold. But through cooperation with the Almonte City School District and Almonte Parks and Recreation, every single second grade student in the entire district got to go to the Almonte pools for free. Okay, to learn the important skills necessary to swim, stay afloat and, you know, whatever, uh, just to avoid being a statistic, right? So, um, yeah, hopefully we'll get back to that next year. But, um, uh, you're right, it's, it's about school districts, right? And we, we can do things to make our students' lives better and that was one of them. And it was a great program with, uh, Almonte Parks and Rec. So, uh, kudos to Almonte City School District, uh, for that. Um, thank you, Mr. Diaz, for stepping in for me, uh, at the last board meeting while I recovered. Um, I do appreciate that. You know, NSBA, um, it was interesting because I had just, uh, read that email prior to driving down to the NSBA, uh, conference. And I just thought that the timing was, was interesting. Um, but, you know, I, I kept an open mind, um, and, but I did really enjoy myself and at the NSBA, I thought actually that the, the workshops that I attended were way more refreshing than the ones at CSBA because I got to tell you, at the very last CSBA conference I went to, everything was just kind of rehashed and it was just, again, it's like, we need something new. And I don't know if that, it was just that, um, it was my very first NSBA conference and, but it was a lot more conferences on, on data decision-making and equity and kind of the things that we were talking about here. And I thought, man, there really has to be something else. And, you know, that was the discussion with Dr. Zuniga today. It's like, what was up with that email? So, I'm, I'm happy that Mr. Briones is going to look into it as well as, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Zuniga because I too would like more information, uh, on that and, um, you know, because it is a big deal. Um, and if it's honestly that, you know, maybe NSBA is crossing into some of our business partners, I don't know. Um, hopefully that's not the case, but, and, you know, even, even if it is, I mean, I think, um, it was in bad taste. Um, I think the timing was, was horrible. And, um, I for one really enjoyed myself and learned a lot at, at NSBA. Um, so, you know, I look forward to some, to some information.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
Um, to your point about, uh, perhaps some of the, the need for new topics at, uh, AEC, uh, just a reminder to everyone, you should have received an email from CSBA, uh, last month and I received it on the 22nd. Uh, every year, they do put out a call for proposals for trade, for sessions. Says if there's a topic or something that you would like to present on, you can submit the proposal. Um, the categories are community engagement and advocacy, equity and opportunity, funding and finance, leadership through governance, uh, well-being and mental health.
Well, wellness centers, there's, there's a lot.
There's, there's a lot that's going on here that, you know, we can submit and then if it's accepted, then we can, uh, you know, somebody can present on it with staff and put it together.
Yeah, thank you. And then I did mention about Lena Luna. That was one of the things that I talked about during, um, the session is that, you know, it, it's, it's so awesome when, you know, I know it was the vendor floor, but to hear such good things coming from them about our staff, just, you feel the pride. It's like, oh, that's awesome, you know? Um, and so I, you know, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that when she was present. Um, but I am going to give you that information, Dr. Zuniga, because I thought that was really cool. So, I don't know that it was Durham though. Oh, that was a bluebird. Anyway, I got the card. Anyway, that's all I have, Dr. Zuniga.
Mr. Briones sends that email about equity and access and then say, "See program for NSBA sessions." I'm serious, I'm not joking. I'm serious. I'm not joking. You know, another, Mr. President, I was a little bit embarrassed that when they were calling out all the presidents from all the state, I was embarrassed that our California representative was not there. That did not sit well with me. That kind of pissed me off, that here, all these people come from California, from New York and Alabama.
They even mentioned somebody from Canada.
Yeah, from Canada. And again, I don't care if you don't agree with what they're saying, but you still need to show up. You know, you're not just representing yourself. If you got pissed off with somebody on that board, you're representing all of the board members in California. You know, put your big boy chonies on, get over it, and show up. That's kind of how I felt.
Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, thank you. Two items. First one, obviously, the item that was pulled today to ensure that we have the appropriate language on the resolution in preparation for the annual governing board member elections on November 8th. So I'm requesting, if we do get a response back on Friday evening from the county committee, that we have a meeting next week, preferably on Wednesday. We have a back-to-school night, but that starts at 6:00. If you're making your way to Almani High School, maybe at 5:00. A short meeting to allow us some time to revise the resolution, work with Laco on that language and legal counsel, and then provide that to the board on Wednesday for approval. So that would be the 13th at 5:00 p.m. here at the district office.
And it was Laco that recommended that we hold off, right? That's why we're doing this. So.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then obviously, Laco submits our resolution to county registrar's office. This is going to be the first time we're doing this. They recommend that that language is clear about what by choice the areas would be on that resolution for elections in November.
To avoid confusion.
Correct. And the purpose of this is because November 30th is the deadline to submit it. And we have spring break in the following week, and then we have one more week cutting it close to approve it and submit it. That's our recommendation. If Wednesday doesn't work, maybe another day next week.
April 30th?
13th, yes.
No, no, but you said the deadline, April 30th?
Yes.
Okay. I think you said November 30th.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's April.
April 30th, okay.
But the election is November.
I have another board meeting at 6:00 on April 13th, so as long as we're out by then.
We're hoping just one item, no other items on the agenda.
We'll be in and out.
That is if we get the response on Friday, which we're hoping that we get that.
Okay.
And as mentioned to you in the memo, we will be there at the virtual meeting on Friday. I believe there's one, two, three, four, four school districts that are up. So presentation, so we are on a time schedule, 6:30 around approximately. 20-minute presentation, collaboration with our partners we've been working alongside with for this process. And then we'll wait what the response is. And our goal, our hope is that the county has one meeting combined because of the timing, and that we get a response that evening. Okay? And then the other item is shared with you also earlier, an update about a board retreat. It's been very difficult because of the timing and with the pandemic and getting back to squared thing. It's important that we do have a one-day retreat with our administration team and you. And I feel comfortable with looking at, and after reviewing it with our principals and our cabinet members, that we looked at some of the dates and options. And we felt that because of just the timing, that August 20th, the first week back, to launch this and have that retreat would be ideal for us. So if you can look at August 20th, a Saturday morning, and obviously, the same session that we had from 8:00 in the morning approximately to about 3:00 in the afternoon, somewhere around there, to make it that day for that. So if you guys are with, okay with plenty of time with August 20th on your calendar, we'll go ahead and mark it and memorialize that.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay?
All right. Have a good day.
Okay?
MUHSD Retreat.
Yeah. And that's it. And just a highlight from Thank You Really Tribune today. The Almani Promise Foundation launched the program to streamline students' path to college. This was the opportunity for the foundation to showcase that we're providing 13,000 pamphlets to the Mountain View School District and Almani City School District Roadmap College. Really, a fine job they did is introducing this to parents and students themselves about what it takes for each grade level before they go on to the next grade level to prepare themselves for college. So kudos to the foundation and to those who are there. I, along with my other colleagues, other superintendents were there and said a few words on behalf of our school district too. So our next goal is to provide that roadmap draft from ninth grade to 12th grade, which we're experts at. So we're ready for that. Work along with Mr. Ciso and his department to work with the foundation to make sure that what is accurate in our district are needs to make sure our students continue on to post-secondary plans as well. So we're looking forward to that. That's it, President.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Ligo, if you can report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you. For item A, the board approved a settlement agreement in the amount of $40,000 by a vote of 5-0. For items B, C, and D, no action was taken.
One second. Oh, here we go.
Thank you. We will conclude this board meeting in the memory of retired employee Joe Posera and also a Royal student, Nathan Caballero. Have a good night, everybody.